Welcome, everyone. I call the November 12th Council Study Session to order. Before we begin, I have a few announcements. Firstly, regarding the room configuration, you'll notice that the room is configured differently than normal for a study session. This is to allow maximum use of the space for members of the public. And regarding public comments, we want to thank you all for all of you who have emailed their comments on tonight's agenda item. Specifically, the proposed redesignation and rezone of the Issaquah School District property referred to as Providence Heights. We recognize that many of you feel very strongly and are personally invested in the outcome of this decision. Can everyone hear me? Is that better? Okay. I'll go over that again. Regarding room configuration, you'll notice that the room is configured differently than normal for a study session. This is to allow maximum use of the space for members of the public. Regarding public comments, thank you to all of those of you who have emailed their comments on tonight's agenda items, specifically the proposed redesignation and rezone of the Issaquah School District property referred to as Providence Heights. And we recognize that many of you feel very strongly and are personally invested in the outcome of this decision. There will be opportunity for public comments on that item and any of the other comprehensive plan amendments tonight after the staff presentation and council question and answer period. At that time, we will allow two hours for public comment. Those who have signed up to speak listed in positions 1 to 24 on the sign-up sheet will be provided an opportunity to speak. Any others on the list will be allowed to speak, time permitting, up to that two-hour duration. Specific guidelines will be provided during that portion of the meeting. Regarding overflow seating, there is overflow seating available across the street on the first floor of City Hall in the Eagle Room. A live video stream is being shown there. And with that, we will move to the first item on our agenda, which is ID 0469, 2019 Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Map Amendments. And before the staff presentation, I'd like to ask the city attorney to provide council guidance on what can be discussed tonight, given the upcoming State Environmental Policy Act (CIPA) appeal hearing.
Thank you, Councilmember Hunt. As the council knows, but as some people in the audience may not know, the city has received an appeal of the determination of non-significance that the city has issued for the comprehensive plan amendments and rezone under the State Environmental Policy The appeal has been filed by the Providence Point Umbrella Homeowners Association, and the CIPA appeal will be heard by the council on December 2nd of this year, Monday, December 2nd, at the council meeting. At issue in the appeal is whether the city properly conducted its environmental review of the comprehensive plan amendments and rezones, in particular, the amendments relating to the Issaquah School District property, and whether the city properly determined that the environmental impacts of the comprehensive plan amendments and rezone are not environmentally significant. Because of these constraints, the council cannot take testimony on the issues in the CIPA appeal tonight, again, as to whether or not the city properly conducted its environmental review, or whether the city made a mistake in issuing the environmental determination. Those issues will be the subject of the public hearing on December 2nd that will take place, and the council will be required to decide that appeal based solely on the evidence that it receives at that public hearing. All testimony at that hearing is going to be under oath, and to the extent any witnesses are called who are experts in their fields, they will be subject to cross-examination by the parties to that appeal. So that's not this evening. Nobody's going to get cross-examined tonight. But the reason that Councilmember Hunt has called on me this evening to say this is to let you know that there is a difference between what is happening tonight and the CIPA appeal. There are two separate things. The CIPA appeal is going to be heard on December 2nd. Tonight is for the city council to consider the rezone and the comprehensive plan amendments from a legislative or policy perspective. It is also important to note that as you testify this evening, you should not be testifying regarding the CIPA issues. Again, that's reserved for December 2nd. It is not for discussion tonight. At the same time, however, I think everybody recognizes that members of the public, or at least some members of the public, want to testify as to the compatibility of the proposed zoning change with the current comprehensive plan and with the surrounding properties, and that that may, in fact, result in some testimony being given regarding why people feel it is or is not compatible. And that may involve traffic. It may involve a number of issues. To the extent that any such testimony is given tonight, it could only be considered by the council on that legislative policy determination. It cannot be considered by the council in that CIPA appeal because the only testimony the council can consider in the CIPA appeal is the testimony that will be given that evening. So with that, if somebody does get up and start talking about the CIPA appeal, I will probably try to get Councilmember Hunt's attention, and we may stop you from doing that. So please respect that part of the record and don't talk about the CIPA appeal, but hopefully there's -- I'm sure there's plenty of other testimony that all of you will want to give tonight that the council will want to hear, so.
Thank you. And with that, I'd like to invite Trish Hanen in, Policy Planning Manager, to make a presentation.
Thank you. Thank you all. Tonight's topic are the 2019 Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Map Amendments. The PPC held a public hearing on the docket of amendments way back in January, and you all approved the docket in February and then updated the docket in May. And that docket is a list of all the amendments that we were to try to accomplish this year. There were three public hearings that Planning Policy Commission held, September 26th, it was continued till October 10th, and then continued again till October 24th. And then they sent their draft -- in your packet is their draft recommendation and findings that they will be actually going over at this week's meeting, so that's why you have the draft and not the officially signed version. And tonight, you are being asked to review the comprehensive plan and zoning amendments. By state law, as you all know, we're only allowed to amend the comprehensive plan once a year, and to ensure that all the items are looked at together, we have to do them all together and not piecemeal through the year. And again, we're asking you to review all the ones to ensure consistency altogether. We're asking you to look at them all together. The direction needed for tonight is your chance to ask as many questions and get answers and direct us to get more answers for you before the next meeting where you might take action, and also to recommend referral of these amendments to the December 16th regular meeting for potential action. There are some items specifically that you might want to ask us questions about or ask us to find more information about, and we're happy to do that. And when those come through, I'll point those out, that those are things that you may have some questions about. Seeing questions, do you have a question?
I do. Just on? Can't tell. Thanks. The proposed changes to the amendments as presented and then recommend referral, are we taking --
Louder, please.
Are we taking action tonight, or?
No, you would just either ask us questions for us to bring back answers on the 16th, but more directing us to check into this, what about options for this, but not actually direction that, yes, this is how we want this to approve it.
Okay, no motions and no decisions.
Correct. Correct. Any other questions for? The first item in the docket was the transportation element. We do this one every year because you all look at the Transportation Improvement Program, the six-year plan, each year in the summer, spring and summer, and then at the end of the year, we incorporate that into the comprehensive plan that's required by the state. Also, you all did an update to concurrency from 2018, and we put all of the information that you learned from the update, and we're putting that into the comprehensive plan. Nothing new, just showing what's already been done and making sure that the comprehensive plan is as current and accurate as possible. We also updated some of the project maps and tables to reflect the completed projects, and also some of the maps to show some of the projects in the urban villages, so that we're -- the planners and applicants are able to have complete and up-to-date maps when they're looking at their requirements. The land use element was the second on the docket, and this is also something that we do annually, so that you know how many housing units and jobs we have acquired in the past year to see how we're doing with our state growth targets. This year, we added 154 housing units in 2019, and we're up to 88% of our growth target, which means that we need 693 housing units to meet the 20-year target, which would end in 2031. Jobs, we added 1,596, and this is from 2018. Our source is different for jobs, so we're a year behind. We're 43% to our state mandated target, and so we're still on track for both housing and jobs. Jobs are just coming on a little slower, although they've increased. As you can see, from 2016, 17, 18, they've actually gone up. We're adding more jobs each year, whereas the housing numbers were going down the last three years. So that was kind of an interesting factoid. The updated policies related to the Shoreline Master Program are not included in this version. We're hoping that the Shoreline Master Program comes to you all in the first quarter, and so then next year, we would be able to update the comprehensive plan with that new information. We also added policies regarding Mountains to Sound Greenway, that we added that as a request of the administration, and worked with Mountains to Sound on the language for And now are the land use designations and zoning. The land use designation is the big general map that's in the comprehensive plan that generally has groupings of zones within the category, within the umbrella. And then the zoning is the actual zoning map that has, that dictates height, setbacks, those sorts of things. And so this part of the comprehensive plan changes, is proposing to change both of those to community facilities. The first three are the ones that have received the most public comment, and those are the three that are purchased by the Issaquah School District for the provision of additional schools. The administration's proposal is that all three of the parcel be redesignated to community facilities and that the zone be community facilities, facilities, to allow them to put the schools there. I'm going to call Keith Niven up to describe this slide.
Good evening, City Council. Keith Niven, Director of Development Services. So I wanted to just take a moment and provide a little bit more context around the process related to actually getting to a school. We're in the first piece of this, consider it kind of a two-part dance. The first part is this comprehensive plan redesignation rezone. The council can choose to either approve that, deny that, or approve it with conditions. Okay? If the council approves it, or approves it with conditions, what that does is give the school district a green light to submit their land use permit. And for this particular property, because it's in excess of 15 acres, that is a master site plan, okay? And a master site plan, the way that process works is first, staff will go through that application with the applicant, and ultimately, we will come up with a staff report and likely conditions of approval that we would put on that particular application, and that goes to the Development Commission. And Development Commission then holds a hearing. There's an opportunity then for additional public comment, and the Development Commission can either basically take the recommendations that the staff prepared and move them forward to the council. They could choose to deny the application, recommend denial, they're not the decision-maker, or they could put their own conditions on, or some combination of staff's conditions and their own. That recommendation then comes to the city council, because this is a master site plan, and the city council then has that same menu of choices when it comes to them. They can approve it based on the Development Commission's recommendation, they can deny it, or they could potentially put their own conditions on in addition to what Development Commission recommended.
Okay. The next --
Quick question.
It was so quiet, I thought you guys were -- okay?
What would be the timeframe for the Development Commission's work?
Super great question. There's a lot of variability in our permitting process, and a lot of it has to do with the application completeness and its compliance with our codes. So let's assume that if the council were to approve the rezone and redesignation, my guess is Issaquah School District would come in with an application for their master site plan probably in January, January, February, so sometime in the first, early first quarter of 2020. We would then sit down with them and kind of figure out the length of time for the process. What I would guess with you is somewhere around four to five months of staff review. Then DC, DC has two meetings, so the quickest that can happen is in one month, and that's if you happen to hit them right on target with their scheduled meeting dates. So you've got at least six months of staff and Development Commission before it comes to the council for its decision.
Okay, thank you. So we were looking at next summer, should it go to that phase? Thank you.
That would be my guess. Yes.
Councilmember Goodman?
What kicks it into a master site plan? Is it the number of acres?
Being in excess of 15.
Okay. The next parcel is Parcel 5, which is the King County-owned parcel of Bergsma, and they would like it to be intended solely for trails to connect to Cougar Mountain. And so we're recommending that it's community facilities and then the open space zone. And the other parcels are city-owned, and we've chosen not to look at redesignating or rezoning those until we're real sure what amenities we would like to go through there. So Parks will be doing an exercise in figuring out, you know, where are the trails, what connects to what. And so they'll be doing that next year, and then we would probably bring the rezone redesignation to you in the next docket cycle. So that's why those were removed from this go-round. Parcel 11 is also owned by the school district and purchased with the thought of having a school there, and this would be proposed for community facilities, facilities. Parcells 12 and 13, we received some comments on this in Planning Policy Commission, and also today, we received comments. And so although we've, the recommendation is to have it be community facilities, facilities, the purpose being that Parcel 13 has the roundabout for 62nd, and part of the roadway for 62nd goes through the southeastern part of 12. It has a, 12 has an easement, a native growth protection easement over the entire site, so that, so we couldn't do buildings, we couldn't do anything else there. However, some folks have said it still seems odd that you would put community facilities, facilities on there when just part of it is the road. And you have options, which is always a good thing. And I emailed Councilmember Hunt, and then the rest of you, I know some of you probably didn't get to the email because it was just moments ago, but other options could be that if you wanted, the city also owns the land to the south, and it's own community facilities, recreation. And if you wanted, you could condition the rezone redesignation to, that the rest of 12 could be open space on the condition that the city do a lot line adjustment and move the roadway into the parcel below. And that costs a bit of money to do the surveying and the legal description, but if that would make you more comfortable, that's fine. We could also, and the reason that we didn't recommend to have it be open space is that it would create a non-conforming use, because you're not, you shouldn't have a roadway in open space. And if something should destroy the road or wreck the road somehow, our code says that if you have a non-conforming use, when you rebuild it, you should try to make it less non-conforming, which for a road is, we'd have to be, we'd have to really ponder how we make the road less non-conforming in an open space zone. But those are options that we can go through. Since it is city-owned land, if councils in the future were to choose, they wanted to put a building or something there, it would come to the council for action because it is city-owned, and we would tell them that it has a native growth protection easement that doesn't allow them to do anything on that parcel. But if you would want it to be clear through the zoning, there are options that you can do that. So, and I'll remind you that at the end to see if there's any questions that you would like us to research or thoughts that you have that we can provide you with more information on the 16th. So I'll remind you that this was one that received some public comment. Are there questions on this one at this moment? The last one is Parcel 14 on the corner of Front Street and Newport Way. The city has acquired it to be part of the Front Street assemblage, and we're proposing the zoning be community facilities, recreation. The utilities and public services element is updated due to the recent adoption of the King County Comprehensive Solid Waste Plan. The Parks Recreation Open Space and Trails element, when you all adopted the 2018 Strategic Plan, you asked that the goals and policies be relooked at by Planning Policy Commission. We had a subcommittee with the Park Board and Planning Policy Commission, and they reworked the goals and policies, and that's what's in your packet tonight. The Park Board was happy, Planning Commission was happy, and we were very happy that you asked us to go back and look at that again. Capital Facilities element hadn't been updated in several years. We were able to update it finally because we finished the fire, transportation, and school impact fees, and the police, general government buildings, and bike pedestrian mitigation fees. The information in this, in the document is required to be adopted before the end of the year, so that the impact fees and mitigation fees can take effect January 1 of next year. The park impact fee, however, we're in the process of updating that now, so the information is more general in the plan, and we also included all of the projects that's in the capital improvement program, because we're not completely sure how the impact fees will turn out yet, but we know that by state law, you need to have any of the projects that get to be, that get to use impact fees, you have to have those in your capital facilities element. So we're putting them all in there, just so, in the hope that when we update the park impact fees early next year, we will already have a capital facilities element that's consistent with the park impact fees. The other piece, oh, someone took that out. Well, I'll just save that then. I have to, by law, tell you what's not addressed this year that was adopted in the docket. We didn't do anything related to the master mobility plan that's in the strategic plan because we're not done yet. We didn't amend the tree canopy policies because the tree canopy assessment was just done, and we didn't have time to actually review how the policies would change or not change, so we're going to bump that to next year. We did not amend the subarea map because there's still some moving parts there. There were several redesignations and rezones on the docket list that we didn't do. I mentioned the Bergsma ones, also the parcel next to Swedish Hospital, we pulled that one, and the ones on New, and the Bergsma ones. We didn't make any changes related to Title 18 because that's not moving forward till next year. We didn't merge capital facilities and utilities elements, although someday, we'd really love to do that. The stormwater mask, the stormwater management plan is not done yet, so we couldn't incorporate that into the element at this time, but we will next year. And we didn't update the treasures, because the, there's the branding project is going through, and some other pieces that we thought updating the treasures would be very confusing while those other projects were going on, so we're going to save that until we have a little more room to do that. The recommendation for tonight is to approve the proposed 2019 Comprehensive Plan Amendments and Zoning Map Amendments as presented. You're aware that the Planning Policy Commission concurred with the administration in every way except for Parcells 1, 2, and 3, and on those, they wanted, they didn't want any changes to Parcells 1 and 2, but they wanted Parcel 3 to be community facilities, open space. And their reason for not changing Parcel 1 and 2 is the existing single-family zoning does not allow a high school or a stadium. However, the existing single-family zoning does allow an elementary school or a middle school. And that's the way that Planning Policy Commission tried to address the public comments, is to not change the zoning, and that would solve the issue of the high school and stadium. So I wanted you to be sure about that one.
Councilmember Winterstein?
Thank you. Trish, because you're using this language, it does say recommends approval. I just want to remind us that there's no approval this evening.
Correct.
So this is no formal action. This is, this is, this would be language in a bill that we would take under regular business at a future council meeting.
Right, on the 16th, right. Right. You're right. Thanks for pointing that out.
Other questions on? Also, President Mertz?
Thank you. So I want to make sure I understand. It's the administration's recommendation to proceed with the change in zoning for Parcells 1 and 2, and basically to not adopt the PPC's recommendations in regards to Parcells 1 and 2. Is that correct?
Correct. Correct. And I'm going to say it a different way. The administration does not agree with PPC's recommendation. Is that what I'm hearing you say? Okay.
Yes. Yep. Pardon me. Then in regards to Parcel 3, the recommendation from PPC was to move to community facilities, open space. That is also not the administration's recommendation. Is that correct?
Correct. We would recommend that it be community facilities, facilities.
And if, in regards to Parcel 3, if the council adopted the PPC's recommendation, that would preclude the school district's use of the land for a middle school or an elementary school?
On Parcel 3, if you chose to follow PPC's recommendation, it would be open space, and they couldn't put a building on Parcel 3. But it depends on what you would zone, what your recommendation for 1 or 2 could be. If you did nothing for Parcells 1 and 2, the existing single-family zoning allows an elementary school or a middle school, but not a high school or a stadium. So that's, that was PPC's recommendation, whereas the administration proposed all three parcels to be community facilities, facilities, which would allow a middle school or a high school or an elementary school.
Thank you.
Anything else before? So now is your chance to provide any direction, or questions, or thoughts that you have, or any changes that you'd like to see December 16th?
Do we have any questions at this time? Councilmember Goodman? Councilmember Winterstein?
Trish, my understanding is that there is criteria for approval, or, so that there's an IMC code for comp plan amendments, approval criteria 1804-660-C. Okay. There's also approval criteria for rezone requests under 1804-632-D. And I was wondering if, I didn't see any of that criteria or analysis in our packet.
Right. When, the piece that you're speaking of is, I think of it more like the generic kind of rezones that would be from anyone with any use. And when it's community facilities, it sort of narrows the focus in that it has to be owned by a public entity, and it has to be used for public purpose. And so I included in your packet the purpose and intent of all three zones, and then in each of the proposals, there's a checkbox of, does this, does this meet the criteria of being either community facilities, facilities, or community facilities, open space? Because in our mind, if you meet those criteria, the rest of them fit into that category of if you can meet the criteria of being either Community Facilities Facilities or Community Facilities Open Space? Because in, in our mind, if you meet those criteria, the rest of them fit into that category of if, if you can meet the requirements of being a Community Facility, then you've already met the criteria of the, of just a regular generic rezone. So we didn't duplicate them.
Okay. That doesn't make any sense to me.
Well, for example, the...
I guess my question is, is the analysis under these two codes in our packet? And I think the answer is no.
Correct.
Thanks.
Councilmember Winterstein, did you have a question?
I did, but I forgot it.
It'll come back.
Do we have any more questions at this time? Deputy President Batiste?
No, I'm trying to find it.
I did.
Thank you for the presentation tonight. And just, you spoke, this is just a brief question, but you spoke about Parcells 12 and 13 and how there, there could be some movement with, with the road and we had gotten some public feedback about that in regard to the southern border. If we could just have a little more information when we come forward in the next, as we talk about it next time, that'd be great.
Councilmember Winterstein?
Yeah, thank you. Earlier, a moment ago, Trish said that she asked us now, do we have anything for her? And I want to wait until after. I want to take advantage of that opportunity after we hear any comments from the public. And I may have some input for you at that time.
Councilmember Walsh?
That was what I was going to clarify for both us and the public is that we may ask questions now, we have time for public comment, and then we also have time to discuss afterwards. So we're not saying this is all we have to say about it.
Right. Correct. And on Parcells 12 and 13, I do have the map that has the road going through it. That might help you understand, you know, that where the road is and how the, if you chose to do a lot line adjustment, how that would work. But we can do that after the public comments if you'd rather.
That's great.
Thanks. My last slide is just the timing and next steps. The SEPA Appeal Hearing is December 2nd and then December 16th would be the regular City Council where you potentially might take action. Want to do public comments or?
So do we have any more questions before we move to public comments?
Okay.
Okay. So then with that, we will move into the public comments session and we will now take public comments. Comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes each for a total of two hours. If all of those of you who have signed up in advance to speak have finished before the two-hour period, I will open the floor for additional commenters until that two-hour mark. And those not making comments can indicate support for a position by raising your hands. This is helpful for council who will be looking at the audience and we will register that as support for the speaker. Additional guidelines for public participation are displayed on the screen. And before we begin, I also want to acknowledge the many people who have taken the time to email their input to the City Council. Thank you. We have, we have, receives those emails and we can be reached at citycouncil@isiquawawa.gov. And now the City Attorney has some guidance for those making comments, if you have any additional guidance at this time.
I have nothing other than what we talked about earlier.
Okay, thank you. Then Tisha, can you please read the names of those who have signed up to speak?
Yes. The Audience Comments podium is just up here to your left. When I read your names, if the first person could come to speak into the microphone at the podium and the other three queue up in those three chairs at the edge of the room, that will help things move a little more efficiently. So the first four commenters we have are Ron Thiel, Suzanne Weaver, Ann Moore, and Tim Baines.
Dear Issaquah City Council, I am Ron Thiele, Superintendent of the amazing Issaquah Public School District. I am also a resident of the City of Issaquah. I live at 600 Northwest Locust Street. I appreciate this opportunity to provide public input on this most critical of issues facing our public school system, students, and families. I also want you to know, I recognize that walking into a full chamber like this can be a bit unnerving for folks. I've sat in that seat as well, but I also want you to know that the old civics teacher in me loves this level of community engagement. So I think it, it's a testimony to our community that so many folks care so deeply about the work that you all do and that we do. I also want to thank the council for our past and ongoing partnership to address a whole range of issues. We don't just come here to talk about property and zoning all the time, but we've had some wonderful collaborative work on student health and wellness issues, environmental sustainability, arts culture, and family engagement. So thank you for that work as well. I previously submitted a letter for your review regarding the important issue of zoning for the school district's future school sites at Providence Heights and Talus. My letter and the letter of our school board cover a number of important points, but given my limited time tonight, I want to focus on the school district's willingness to work with our neighboring communities and the city in order to build schools that integrate well into our community. As noted in my letter to the City Council, our efforts to acquire property at Providence Heights has been challenging to say the least. We are nearly 40 months from when the ISD School Board Directors began this process to acquire these school sites. Now, I must apologize to the residents of Providence Point for my failure to communicate with you through, through your HOA and other committees about the progress or status of this property over the last three years, even if I didn't have much to report at times. I wish I had communicated better, but the ongoing litigation that this property was under did make that challenging for me. What I can tell the council and the residents that are here tonight from Providence Point, from the Providence Point area, is that we will happily work with all of our neighbors around these future school sites or any other ISD facilities. We want to be good neighbors. In fact, we will work to address concerns during the permitting and the planning as, as much as possible on these school sites. Again, we want to be good neighbors and I'm confident that we will be. I'm also hopeful that these new schools will also bring new recreational and cultural opportunities for all of the residents of our community. We look forward to exploring ways that our neighbors can be involved in our schools. As your superintendent, I will happily schedule an ongoing monthly meeting at Providence Point to provide status updates on the project, gather input and thoughts about how the project might come together and explore opportunities for us to collaborate. Please, and I, I've talked with some of you here earlier tonight, just let me know who I should coordinate these monthly meetings with and I will be there enthusiastically, ready to listen and to share. Finally, I'll note that building new schools within our urban growth boundary is difficult, especially when we're talking about a comprehensive high school. And I will say, we don't have any other property options. I'll also point out that these schools are a huge community asset and the building of a new high school is something that only occurs every few generations. This is a generational decision and one that will impact tens of thousands of families for many years and decades to come. So thank you for this opportunity and for your consideration of our request and I truly look forward to working with our entire community as we continue to strive to provide the best education possible for the children of our amazing community. Thank you.
Many hands raised in support.
Hi, my name is Suzanne Weaver. I live at 3749 234th Avenue Southeast in Summamish. I am also on the Issaquah School Board. I have been on the board for 13 years and I want to thank you for your time tonight. And I'm here to give you just a brief overview of high school capacity in the Issaquah School District and our need for a fourth comprehensive high school. I want to talk about two of our high schools tonight. Issaquah High School, which I'm sure you're familiar with on Second Avenue, was recently rebuilt to house approximately 1,800 students. It currently has a head count of 2,400 students, nearly 2,400, and 12% of students are currently taught in 10 portable classrooms. At Skyline High School in Summamish was relatively recently expanded to house approximately 1,800 students. The current head count there is about 2,200 and 20% of students at Skyline are currently taught in 16 portable classrooms. So you think about that, that's one in five kids are in a portable classroom. Portable classrooms are really only a short-term solution to overcrowding. They place an undue pressure on our core facilities, on restrooms, on lunchrooms, making it difficult for all students to access lunch in the brief time that they have. Undue pressure on gyms, on parking lots. We really don't want to get into a situation where parking overflows into our neighborhoods. Nobody likes that. Places pressure on teacher prep spaces, becomes very difficult for teachers to do their work between classes. And furthermore, there is absolutely no more capacity for portables on either high school campus. The Providence Heights property is ideally situated to draw students equally from both of those high schools and we would anticipate pulling about 700 students out of both Issaquah High and Skyline. It would relieve the overcrowded conditions at both schools. Without the ability to build a high school on this property, by 2025, we will have more than 1,000 high school students without seats in our schools. So I want to strongly urge you to zone all three of these parcels, Community Facilities Facilities, and thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Many hands raised in support.
Hello, my name is Ann Moore and I live at 6530 155th Avenue Southeast in Bellevue. I serve as an elected school director for the Issaquah School District. I've served on the school board for eight years and will be continuing my service by starting my third term in December. Thank you for the work that you do as our elected leaders in the City of Issaquah. I appreciate the partnership between the Issaquah School Board and the Issaquah City Council. We've been able to collaborate on many things, including our most recent joint meeting to discuss the opioid crisis. We appreciate the work the city has done over the last several years to respond to the Growth Management Act and the King County Growth Management Planning Council, including the King County countywide planning policies which were adopted. These planning policies require that new school facilities be sited within the growth management area. For the Issaquah School District, which spans the urban growth boundary, finding developable land within the urban growth area has been extremely difficult as less than half the school district sits within this area. We have searched for land for over four years and have no other property options. We appreciate you recognizing our difficulties citing schools through the Land Use Policy G5, which states citing of compact schools shall reflect land scarcity by using smaller footprints on lots smaller than that of the recommended state minimum acreage guidelines. Beyond that, we appreciate the work the city did in 2017 to approve Ordinance 2806, which amended the land use codes for Community Facilities standards to specifically call out compact facilities, which allow for the citing of public schools more efficiently as the city continues to densify. The rationale from the city was that as Issaquah is located within the urban growth boundary, the use of land for public schools and public facilities must be done as efficiently as possible to ensure that public lands are used wisely. Further, Land Use Policy G6 states compact school design shall use the least amount of land for redevelopment and supporting infrastructure that is reasonable, and we agree and want to use land wisely. In addition, you've asked that through Land Use Policy G7, that there be a partnership between the city and the school district to provide shared uses of facilities, meeting the needs of the students and the neighborhood community. Through the district inter-local agreement with the city, the Issaquah Parks and Recreation Programs use district gyms and fields and tracks almost daily for their basketball, soccer, and running programs. Indeed, the City of Issaquah Parks and Recreation Program is the single largest user of district facilities outside of school time. The introduction of two new school facilities would also help to meet the need of the city's residents. We are following the framework the city has laid out through their land use policies by building two schools on the Providence Heights property. 40 acres is recommended for a high school and 10 acres is recommended for an elementary school. Together, that would mean one or more sites totaling more than 50 acres. However, with efficient planning, shared use of facilities, and the compact school standards, we can use the 40-acre Providence Heights property for the citing of both the high school and the elementary school. Because we are a public entity using public land for public school facilities, we fall squarely into the definition of your land use designation of Community Facilities. And as we cite a public school on school district property, then the expected zoning is Community Facilities Facilities. The work the city did to include compact facilities into the Community Facilities Facilities zoning defines, provide definitions provide for the efficient development of the school district property. We value the partnership between the school district and the city and we appreciate you formally recognizing this partnership in Land Use Policy G3, saying that the city will partner with the Issaquah School District to cite compact schools to meet the anticipated growth throughout the district. Again, we're following your framework and land use policies to cite and build our new schools more efficiently, but to achieve this, we must have our school district properties zoned Community Facilities Facilities. So please adopt the staff-recommended 2019 Comprehensive Plan, which changes the zoning on all three parcels of the Providence Heights property to Community Facilities Facilities. I recognize that the change in zoning is just one step in a long process to build these much-needed schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Many hands raised in support.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Tim Baines and my family and I live just up the hill in Squawk Mountain at 815 Highwood Drive Southwest. My two oldest sons attend Issaquah Valley Elementary, where their little brother will join them in a few years, and I'm the principal at Sunny Hills Elementary. I was born in the South Cove neighborhood and grew up in Miramont and attended Clark Elementary, Issaquah Middle, and Issaquah High School as a student. I rejoined the district 12 years ago as a staff member, as a teacher at Issaquah High School for six years, and then an assistant principal at Issaquah Middle for three years and Issaquah Valley for the last two years. And now, as I mentioned before, I'm currently the principal at Sunny Hills. I share all of this because I'm committed and invested in our community and our schools in a number of unique ways. Both the City of Issaquah and the Issaquah School District that I grew up in looks significantly different from the City of Issaquah that my own boys know today, and I'm proud of those differences. It is a great privilege to raise my own family in the community where I also grew up and I love that the Issaquah where my boys are growing up is more diverse, colorful, and active than it was 30 years ago. When my brother was part of the original opening at Skyline High School in September 1997, I remember the excitement of opening that new building. It's my understanding that at that time, Issaquah High School had just reached around 2,100 students and it was feeling the impact of the Yonklohanni development. To ease that crowding, Skyline High was built. When schools get too big, they can lose important characteristics that lead to learning, such as personal feelings of ownership, strong interpersonal relationships with staff and other students, and a strong sense of student belonging. Parents expect this for their children as part of Issaquah, as part of our school district. Building a third high school in 1997 helped maintain the connectedness of students and staff at Issaquah High School and built a new community for our Skyline students and families. Now, since that time in 1997, we've grown. Now we have the Issaquah Highlands, Talus, a major hospital, two major transit centers, and many, many new homes, neighborhoods, and high-density housing units. The citizens were excited to pass new bonds to support the building of our new, of our four new schools in 2016. And as you are aware, the most significant challenge has been finding a place to build these schools. Many of our schools, including my own building, Sunny Hills, have been remodeled, rebuilt, and enlarged. The ISD has done our best to make room for each and every student and to maintain the levels of connection and engagement and excellence that our community and residents expect. Our community is a lot different from what it was in 1997. And simply put, to continue these things now, we need new schools to accommodate all their growth. At Sunny Hills, where we currently have the highest enrollment of any elementary in our district, I can tell you firsthand about the impact of crowded schools. There are many unique challenges of running large schools, but I truly believe that our district does an amazing job at mitigating these while maintaining a high-quality education. However, I can also tell you that was much more attainable while serving as an assistant principal IMS when we had just over 700 students in 2014 than two years later when we were at nearly 1,000 students. In my opinion, the sheer logistics are a challenge, but they're really only half the problem. In addition to the great instruction, resources, and curriculum that our residents expect, residents of Issaquah, as a resident of Issaquah who grew up here and has made the intentional decision to raise my own children here, one thing that our district and our community is known for is our connections. is known for is our connections. Through this growth we have experienced, we've decided which things we want to hold on to. We have to decide which things we want to hold on to, and to me, the close connections between students, teachers, administrators, and families are critical to our success in the ISD and our identity as a city. For students, our students deserve the chance to feel connected to one another in their community, to other kids, their teachers, their principals, and I want to know each of my own Sunny Hills students, and I want my own boys to know and be known by those they go to school with every day. Our schools right now are too big to maintain this connectedness, but the community and the school district are ready to build new schools so we can continue to serve our families and students in the way that our community and Issaquah residents expect. I am thrilled about the growth of our city over the past 22 years, since the ISD added Skyline High School, and the way in which the city has thoughtfully and intentionally balanced major growth and expansion with a focus on maintaining community in a positive way and the feeling of Issaquah. I thank you all for your commitment to helping our community grow in such a positive way, and I hope that you will approve the current proposal to allow the building of these new schools, including a new high school, and support the positive and successful growth of our schools to match our community's needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Many hands raised in support.
The next four individuals signed up are Carrie Reckling, Jody Moll, Stacy Cho, and Janelle Tamala.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Carrie Reckling. I live at 406 Northwest Pebble Lane. I'm a resident of the city of Issaquah. I have children currently attending Issaquah School District schools at both the elementary and middle level. I have worked in Issaquah schools for my entire career as a teacher and now administrator. I was a high school assistant principal in the district, and now I'm serving as Issaquah Middle Schools principal in this last year. I love my job. I love my job so much I dye my hair school colors, but I love this community so much where I'm raising my own family with my husband. As the principal of Issaquah Middle Schools, speaking to the current state of overcrowding in our school, we have a beautiful new building that has only had all the construction completed in the last school year. We are currently running over our expected capacity, and even on a brand-new campus, we have eight portables set up to help us serve the educational needs of all our students who attend IMS. We share classroom spaces with multiple teachers and have some teachers moving to new classrooms to teach during their prep periods. Every conference space we have, we utilize heavily each day for staff offices and support areas for students. We utilize hallways and outdoor spaces to allow students the opportunity for movement during lunches, and our PE teachers are incredibly creative about using the spaces available to them to manage the large classes across our campus. We often see our PE classes in our commons and hallways for classroom space in addition to the other spaces that we have on campus. We are hopeful that the Middle School 6 project will go forward, bringing the much-needed relief that IMS and our other middle schools need. It will allow us to alleviate the current overcrowding at all of our middle schools across the district. I'm deeply concerned about the idea of rezoning the Providence Heights property to not allow construction of schools. We have a great need right now for another elementary school and high school. These schools are for my current children and will have a direct impact on their educational experiences. Issaquah Valley Elementary, where my two youngest boys currently attend as second and fourth graders, recently went through a remodel and are still at overcapacity. Over the years that my children have attended there, I've seen every nook and cranny in that beautiful school used for instructional space. At the end of hallways, in the shared pods, they are serving students and working past capacity. Staff members are running small groups and have their offices in what were once storage closets. Similarly, I have an eighth-grade daughter entering high school next year to an already overcrowded situation at Issaquah High. Issaquah High, also a recent new construction project, is past capacity with many portables on site, and they are very creative in meeting the academic needs of their students regarding physical spaces that they can access. If the city allows the new high school to be built as planned by the time my daughter is an upperclassman there, the high schools could feel that alleviation. Her high school experience, along with thousands of other students and families, will be impacted positively by alleviating the stress that overcrowding brings to schools and their resources. The elementary and high schools that are supposed to be built on the Providence Heights property are already approved by voters, and the district has been working in good faith with the city to follow the appropriate process. The construction of these schools is needed now to serve the needs of Issaquah families. The city has approved the construction of hundreds and thousands of homes in our district boundaries over the last 10 years. We need to act as concerned citizens and ensure that we have the schools to serve the homes that our city has welcomed. Preserving the ability to build much-needed schools on this site will allow the city to help create a stronger Issaquah that meets the academic needs of our community members. The school district and the city need a property where the elementary and high school could be built. The school district and the city have a property where the elementary school and high school could be built. Please ensure that the zoning on the Providence Heights property allows the construction process to move forward to meet the needs of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Many hands raised in support.
Dear members of the city council, my name is Jody Moll, and I live at 6061 167th Avenue Southeast in Bellevue. As always, thank you for the work that you do on behalf of our community. It is very much appreciated. I am here to ask you to adopt the recommendation of your staff and to zone the Providence Point Parcel CFF. I have three daughters that have had the benefit of being educated in the ISD, and we're thankful for that education that they've received. They've all had different paths. One is a personal trainer, one is a teacher on the Lumine Nation Reservation, one is a nursing student, all products of the Issaquah School District. I have been a huge advocate for education over the last 20 years. A child's education is one of the most important things we can do for the future of our community and our world. I also have an in-law who owns a condo in Providence Point. Over the years, as this, her mother-in-law, over these years, as the project was moving forward, she was excited at the prospect of having a school next door. The benefits of having children and elderly people work together is a win for our community. I am a parent educator at Pine Lake, and we had three weeks where the residents of Providence Point came to Pine Lake and shared their personal stories so that the Pine Lake Middle Stool students could write their memoirs. I'm also a foundation board member at a major university here in Washington, and we've had discussions of creating a senior living center on our campus. It is a win-win to have students and the elderly working together. The school district realizes they have to respond to the growth that the municipalities allow. It's just the way it works. With urban growth boundaries, finding lands for these schools to be places getting harder and harder. As of a couple of years ago, our district was going and growing an elementary school a year. We, as a community, pass bonds as we want to relieve the overcrowding that is happening and will continue to happen. We all want the land around us to stay the same. I live in the development for the longest time. I got to look at this beautiful field, but you know, I chose to live within the urban growth boundaries, and that land's going to change. If I don't want that land to change, then I need to move outside of the urban growth boundaries. To me, it appears that the city council should follow the staff recommendation for the 2019 Comprehensive Plan by making the three parcels of the plateau campus site CFF so the elementary and high school can be built. There really, as we've been told, no other pieces of land that can be developed to put additional schools on, no empty land. If the district would have to use their eminent domain abilities, it would be way more expensive and way more painful to the taxpayers. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Many hands raised in support.
Good evening. My name is Stacy Cho, and I live at 2608 30th Court Northeast up in Issaquah Highlands, and I've lived there for the past eight years with my husband Joey and my son Brody, who attends Grand Ridge Elementary as a second grader. Not only am I a community member and a mother, but I'm also the principal of Beaver Lake Middle School in the Issaquah School District. As I stand before you today, oh, I stand before you today because I wanted to be a part of the voices that you will hear tonight as you make a decision about rezoning the entire ISD Providence Height property to allow the Issaquah School Districts the opportunity to build our fourth comprehensive high school and our 17th elementary school, as well as the Talus property to allow our district to build our sixth middle school. As you're aware, this has been quite a journey for our district to find the property within the urban growth boundary that meets the needs and requirements to safely build our future schools. Our voters have already approved the bond to build these schools that are much needed to support our growing community. I drive to work from the top of Issaquah Highlands, down Park Drive, along Issaquah-Pine Lake Road to Beaver Lake, and over the past eight years, I've watched our community transform and grow. New businesses have been built, restaurants have arrived, new neighborhoods have been created. Our school district has grown to now 20,959 students, and we have to build these schools to relieve the overcrowding that's happening in our schools. Yes, we make things work by bringing in portables and having teachers share classrooms, which mean they spend their planning period in alternate locations. Our hallways are crowded and class sizes are large, and we've been figuring out solutions knowing that relief is coming with the creation of a new high school, our new middle school, and two new elementary schools. We have a wonderful community that supports our schools, and we're so thankful for that partnership. As Beaver Lake's principal, I'm often contacted by families moving to Washington from out of state or overseas who have done their research, asked their colleagues, and made the decision that they must be a part of the Issaquah School District, because we are the best district in the state of Washington. We have an outstanding reputation and a system that supports the whole child. When schools thrive, communities thrive, and as a city council, I can only imagine how proud that must make you feel as well. Staff across the district are showing up every day to not only educate our students but also prepare them for life beyond high school. We want all of our graduates to be productive citizens who work and give back to our community. Selfishly, when thinking about my own son, I want him in a school that's not overcrowded. Well, he will be known by name for positive reasons and feel connected. Research shows the importance of building relationships with our students for their own social, emotional health and well-being. We want every student to confidently say that they had a connection with at least one adult at school. As our numbers continue to grow, it's more and more difficult to make those much-needed connections. As a principal, our resources are spread thin, and supervision turns into reactive rather than proactive. Our time shifts away from being instructional leaders to supervising and managing the crowds of students during transitions and unstructured times such as lunch. By building these new schools, we will be able to thoughtfully reboundary our district, which will redistribute our students across our system. Our school buildings are also community buildings. I can only speak for Beaver Lake but can share that our turf field, gym, and commons areas are rented out by community groups on a consistent basis. Schools provide an opportunity for community members to come and volunteer and help support our students each day. We have community members that serve as walkabout volunteers and voice mentors in our building. If you rezone the ISD Providence Height property to allow the schools to be built, there will be more opportunities for community members to get involved and make a difference. I will finish by asking you again to rezone these two properties so that we can build our beautiful schools that will serve our future leaders of this community. If not here, then where? Where else within the city's urban growth do you envision our future schools? Our current and future students, staff, and school communities are depending on your decision to rezone the properties. We can't afford to delay. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Many hands raised in support of the speaker.
My name is Janelle Tamala. My address is 23390 Southeast 52nd Street, and I'm a resident, and we own a business in the city as well. Let's see here, I am also a community volunteer. I'm a board member at the Issaquah Schools Foundation for the past seven or eight years, and my husband and I are very active in our community because we love it here. We moved here for the school district, in fact. But to be honest, this isn't about me or my husband or about my now-high school daughters. They will be aged out before these schools are built. I am here as an advocate for our children and community and to honor the people who came before me and advocated for the buildings that my kids are in right now. I am here to ask you to all stop the delays, change the zoning to CFF, and immediately allow development of our new elementary school and high school on the property referred to as Parcels 1, 2, and 3. Our children's biggest crisis right now is the state of their mental health. Our district is spending $2.5 million a year to help with mental health counselors and additional staff because we know this is a huge and important issue. Currently, our schools are so overcrowded that the kids just have no space. This only exacerbates anxiety, even in kids who otherwise wouldn't even have anxiety. Here's the situation, simply put, these schools are just overpacked. The hallways are packed, the buses, the bathrooms, the lunchrooms, et cetera. Kids get cut from sports teams simply because there are too many kids trying out. All of this creates anxiety every minute of every day. These kids are not Legos. We cannot just keep stacking them on top of each other. They are little humans whose job every day is to learn, and we have a responsibility to provide a healthy environment that fosters quality education. Our two city councils, Issaquah and Samamish, respectfully, cannot allow massive development of housing over the past multiple years and then not allow the infrastructure to house these kids responsibly for their education. 180 days a year for six and a half hours a day, we are jamming kids into their schools, and it just has to stop. The anxiety this creates is our fault as adults, and it's morally wrong. We are failing these kids. These kids deserve a respectable learning environment, and they deserve to be seen and understood, not invisible, which is exactly what happens when you overcrowd the schools like this. We are the only district our size without a fourth high school. That is embarrassing because our district is pretty amazing, and so for us not to have this high school is just unheard of. The only solution to this is more buildings. These two schools that our voters overwhelmingly approved back in 2016 aren't being built for luxury or extra convenience. We are not developers trying to make a profit. The district followed every guideline from the city and county to make this building site workable for the two schools. This property was picked for many reasons. It meets the needs of our students geographically, and it is also within the urban growth boundary and within the GMIA, which you all know was a feat in itself. Some of the residents of Providence Point have raised concerns of lower property values and diminished quality of life. I have so much respect for this retirement community, and I think it's always good to raise concerns. To address this, I say that the reason your residences have the high values they have right now is because of the school district and the amazing community partner it makes. Right now, the high values we all benefit from are because of the community engagement from the school district, our graduation rates, test scores, et cetera. I truly believe that having more neighboring schools will not negatively affect our housing values. And as far as quality of life, I would ask this, what is more important than our kids? Are their qualities of life not as important because they don't own property? Because I have just laid out for you the negative impact that they are experiencing right now, and we can do better. I think there is a plan that will make everybody happy, but starting with an 80-foot setback at $1 million an acre is not feasible nor possible, nor is the planning to allow only one school to be built on this property. And just so you know, because everyone else has been saying it, there is no other space for a high school. This isn't a threat, it's just a fact. We are so limited in where we can build, and this land is geographically perfect. Our district is not malicious, and they have nothing to gain by upsetting our neighbors. It costs us taxpayers an average of $6.5 million a year to sit on this property. That equates to $17,800 every day that this is delayed. A basic right in our country was when it was developed, was to give education in America, and settling for anything less is irresponsible, and for lack of a fancier term, it's just mean. I am asking that you immediately stop all delays, change the zoning, and allow construction of the high school and elementary school to start right away. Thank you.
Thank you. Many hands in support. Tisha, do we have more speakers listed?
Yes, the next four are Andrea McCormick, Dana Rundell, Sue Reed, and Judy Cole.
And as you make your way up to the microphone, just a reminder that if you have comments that have been made previously, we've registered support from the audience for comments that have been made previously, so please limit your comments to new information. And we also, as I mentioned before, have received a number of emails on the topic, so with that, please give your public comment. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Andrea McCormick. I reside at 5030 Ames Lake Road Northeast in Carnation. I'm here to speak tonight from a unique perspective. I'm in my seventh year as principal at Issaquah High School, and I have two young children that attend at Issaquah Schools at Clark Elementary. But I also have had the opportunity to live just mere feet away from a large comprehensive high school, Mount Sinai High School in Snoqualmie, Washington, for several years. While I realize that there are many pros and cons to all stakeholders in these decisions, I feel my unique experience as a principal, parent in the district, and someone who has lived within 150 feet of a comprehensive high school are worth sharing. With my experience, I'm here to say that the negatives to neighboring a large high school pale in comparison to overcrowding in schools. As a principal and parent, I want to share with you the three main reasons we should be concerned about not changing the zoning and overcrowding in our schools becoming worse. First is the logistics, second is school climate, and third is teacher retention. There are numerous logistical components to overcrowding in schools. Just to name a few, shared classrooms, long lunch lines, harder to make a team sport because of cuts, harder for leadership opportunities within clubs, generally harder to feel an intimate connection, can't fit the student body into the gymnasium for school climate-building activities like assemblies, can't fit an entire grade level into the theater for grade-level bonding activities and like freshman welcome and orientations, no parking spaces, increased traffic congestion, overcrowdings in the commons at lunchtime, crowded hallways and stairwells, and much more. I want to be clear that this is not about if we need this school built, it's about we need relief now. As of right now, the impacts Issaquah High School are already feeling. My staff does not fit into the library for professional I want to be clear that this is not about if we need this school built, it's about we need relief now. As of right now, the impacts Isqwa High School are already feeling. My staff does not fit into the library for professional development anymore. I have more staff members than I can hold to have small intimate conversations about professional development. I've been out of office spaces since my third year as a high school principal, so for four years now, meaning as we have more students, we increase our support staff, like secretarial staff, and they have no office spaces, so we've had to double them up in offices. I cannot fit my freshman class into a space like the theater to hold freshman orientations or things like that, class bonding events. Almost every single classroom at Isqwa High School is used every single one of our periods right now, and so our teachers have to go into communal prep areas. If we grow by just a little bit more, I will be out of classrooms and have to be very, very creative. And while I am a creative person, I'm running out of options. I've had to convert storage rooms and mechanical spaces into classrooms as of this year for our added art spaces. The impact is already being felt, and so that brings me to school climate. It's harder for students to feel strongly connected when they're in a crowded school. Despite how hard we try to combat this, at the end of the day, it's just a given that in larger groups, students feel like just a number. Even though something as simple as walking in a more crowded hallway, or navigating a crowded stairwell, or having to take the long walk out to a portable, that impact is felt every day. One of the more serious effects, though, of struggling to build that positive school climate is my main focus, which is teacher retention. One of my favorite things about working at Isqwa High School is the teaching staff. The teachers we have are the brightest, intelligent, most caring, and hard-working educators I have ever experienced in my fifteen years of education. It's one of the reasons I made a point to bring my own children into the Isqwa School District. They show up every day and do right by our kids. Asking them to be in multiple classrooms, cart around their materials room to room, and be limited their creative ways because of facility constraints has an impact on job satisfaction. I worry that the logistics of overcrowding, which contribute to it being more difficult to build a positive school climate, will eventually result in teacher turnover, and our students will be the ones who miss out. I've been referred to as a teacher's principal, meaning that my leadership style isn't one where I'm out in the public eye, rocking a microphone. And this is not just because I am an introvert, but it's because that the research is abundantly clear on this topic. Good teachers have the single most proven impact on both learning and a positive relationship to school. This is where it becomes serious for me as a parent. I'm sure many of us, especially those of us who have older kids who have experienced several teachers, have had at least one negative experience with a bad teacher. And as a parent, I know the difference that that makes. Having a good teacher impacts my child's learning, growing, and honestly, their day-to-day happiness in a way that I can't describe. It's incredibly important to me that we do what it takes to make sure the ISD is a place where good teachers want to work because they have a school that supports all of the good things that come with their job. Thank you.
Thank you. Many hands in support of the speaker.
Good evening. My name is Dana Rundell. I live at 4613-241st Avenue Southeast in the city of Isqwa, and I'm here as a parent. Thank you for the special session tonight and for taking the time to hear from us. I'm sorry for reading this, but I just want to make sure I say everything. I'm a parent of three children in the Isqwa School District. I've been a member on several of the school district's bond and levy committees, as well as a committee member for the volunteers of Isqwa Schools. I mention this because I've had the pleasure to work alongside several Providence Point residents. These friends are a valuable asset to our community and steadfast supporters of previous school initiatives. I appreciate the input they provide and the role that they play in our community. Having served on several ISD committees, I am also well aware of the exhaustive search the district has gone through to find suitable parcels of land to build new schools. I know some concerns have been raised and expressed about building two schools on the property. As a homeowner, I would have questions if a new school were being built in my backyard as well. All residents share the common problem of overcrowded schools, just like we have all benefited from the strong reputation of the Isqwa School District. Overcrowded classrooms and schools will negatively impact the quality of education and negatively impact the opportunities afforded our children to a world-class education. Think of the wonderful opportunities and partnerships the senior residents of our community and the students could have. The district could always use more voice mentors, art docents, club and athletic supporters. Our students could volunteer and help at Providence Point, learn valuable life skills from our most experienced citizens, and develop amazing, otherwise unlikely friendships. Everyone stands to benefit from the council's approval to rezone this land and improve the community for generations to come. A new elementary and high school on the Plateau property is a win-win. These new schools are proposed in an area affected by significant growth previously approved by Isqwa, Samamish, and King County. The high school would be perfectly located equidistant between Isqwa High and Skyline High, relieving the overcrowding in our two largest high schools. According to your website and the slide presented tonight, during the years of 2006 through 2018, Isqwa approved new housing permits for over 5,000 units. The total population of Isqwa grew by nearly 22% in the last eight years, with an expected 10% rise in the next five. All of this growth can be wonderful if properly planned for. The Isqwa School District was able to forecast such growth, and with the overwhelming support of the voters, passed a bond measure in 2016 to buy land and build four new schools. According to the city's land use policy, G3, it is the city's responsibility to partner with the school district to help site schools to meet the anticipated growth throughout the district. Policy G5 and G6 state that the siting shall reflect land scarcity and shall use the least amount of land possible. Building two schools with smaller footprints on one property seems like a logical answer to your guidelines. The use of shared parking and facilities allows the district and city to use less land. I know for a fact that the Isqwa School District tries to be a great neighbor, a great city partner, a great steward of taxpayer dollars, and a great place to send our children to be educated. The city of Isqwa benefits from having a partnership with such a strong school district. I strongly urge the council to support the school district and change the zoning of not only parcels one, two, and three, but also parcel 11 and Talis to CFF, and allow for school construction that includes the high school. The voices of several residents should not deter you from considering the overall value these new schools will add to the district, city, and home values for everyone in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Many hands raised in support.
Counsel, thank you. My name is Sue Reed. I live at 4236-246th Place Southeast in Cloughane. I am going to not read this, I'm gonna just try and add to what I think seems to be missing. I'm a parent, I'm just a parent. I have two girls. I have a sixth grader at Beaver Lake Middle School, and I have a ninth grader at Skyline High School. My ninth grader is finding Skyline really challenging. She was an outgoing, super Bulldog winner, super achiever at Beaver Lake and did great there, and Skyline has been really hard for her. She only knows one way to get to her classes and has to go back the same way, or she is lost in a sea of people. She is worried about getting to the bus from her portable, and she only goes to the bathroom once a day. She has to plan it out, and it has to be at lunchtime. I do know for a fact that her teacher, her algebra teacher, Mr. Torres, is in one of the portables, and he joked at parent night that he just couldn't wait, she's in his last period, like he just couldn't answer any questions because he had to go to the bathroom so bad, because he hadn't been able to get out of the portable to go to the bathroom. So I just wanted to give you that picture. Everyone else has been so eloquent and wonderful, and we moved here from Seattle for the schools, but also for the trees. So, you know, I understand. My mom lives at Providence Point, and she'll be speaking up next, and we've always had a great relationship with her friends that she has at Providence Point, and I really hope that the schools and Providence Point can work together for our kids, for my kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Many hands raised in support.
I get stiff sitting so long. My name is Judy Cole. I'm a resident of Providence Point in one of the big buildings, the three-story buildings that are up near where the school property is. I've walked that property a lot in the last five years when we were able to do so. I'm also a retired elementary teacher, teaching preschool and elementary for 35 years. So I have the teacher perspective. I'm here to support the kids, and they're kind of almost victims because they can't make the choices. They need the adults to do the right thing. And what I've heard here tonight sounds like you're on the right track with all the things that the people have said. I would agree completely. I just hope that the different bodies that are making these decisions can work together and problem-solve and not have any animosity. I would, as a senior at the village, I would, at Providence Point, I would love to go and be involved in helping. I've volunteered in classrooms for many years since I retired 20 years ago. I'm sure there will be some problems, but it doesn't seem to me that should be the issue. So I'm hoping that all the wise adults here in Isqwa will make the right choice and allow the schools to be built, and I will get to go and help. Thank you.
Thank you. Many hands raised in support. We are approximately at the one-hour mark, so that's approximately at the half hour, the half mark of our public comments, and so I'd like to take a five-minute break. I also want to do a quick recap of what we've heard so far. So we've received public comment in support of allowing the zoning that would allow for building schools, some comments specifically in support of building high school. And we also have heard about conditions in the existing schools, and we have heard perspectives of members of the community, parents, a resident at Providence Point, educators, school principals, and representatives of the school district. So if you are on the list or would like to make public comments after the break, please do, and please limit your comments to additional information. And so with that, we will take a five-minute break. Thank you.[1292.44] Thank you. Okay, we're about to get started. Thank you. At this time, we will resume public comment. Tisha, could you please read the next four speakers?
Yes, we have Meredith King, Jill Brahm, Jim McCully, and Ron Imhoff. Okay. Hello, my name is Meredith King, and I live at 3404 259th Court Southeast in Sumamish, and I'm here tonight as a parent. I have two children in the Issaquah School District. I have a child at Skyline High School and a daughter at Endeavor Elementary School. And I am opposed to the City Planning Policy Commission's recommendation to downzone the Providence Heights parcels currently owned by the Issaquah School District and prohibit the construction of a new high school. This action would be a mismanagement of taxpayer dollars and should not be considered by the City Council. According to the City of Issaquah's active project list, there have been over 1,000 new homes, apartments, or duplexes built in the city or they're currently under construction this year. This number doesn't even include the new homes under permit review. It's negligent for the City of Issaquah to approve the construction of new housing and prohibit the construction of new schools to accommodate this population growth. While the City of Issaquah has continued to approve new home construction, the Issaquah School District has faced overcrowding schools, specifically at its two high schools in Issaquah and Sumamish. You've heard the numbers that the schools were built to accommodate, and they're simply overcrowded, as we all know. And you are also aware that the Issaquah School District is limited in their search for buildable property due to the regulations established by King County in 2012. As they are restricted to building within the urban growth boundary, after years of exhaustive searching, there is no other option for high school site other than the Providence Heights parcels. The Issaquah School District has worked in good faith for years to find suitable building sites, and delays related to litigation and the eminent domain process has made it time to now serve the needs of students. The 2016 construction bond was overwhelmingly approved by voters, and continued delays in the rezoning request is not only punitive but fiscally irresponsible and will begin to be costing taxpayers millions of dollars per year. And I understand their concerns. We've all recognized them: new school construction from neighboring residents at Providence Point. But as in the past, the Issaquah School District will work with the existing residential community to ensure thoughtful design and create open dialogues of communication. Strong schools build stronger communities. They attract residents who believe in education, and one of the primary motivators for new residents to Issaquah is the reputation and the commitment of Issaquah School District and the sense of community and partnership it brings to the neighborhoods it serves. The City of Issaquah has approved the construction of new homes, and now it's time for the city to make a commitment to the children and improve the construction of the schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Many hands raised in support of the speaker. May we have the next speaker, please?
Good evening, Council. My name is Jim McCully. I live at Providence Point. I'll keep my remarks very short. While I know education is the primary thing for children, and I know this parcel back here is probably going to be zoned for high school, whatever you're, whatever's going to happen, but please, if you will, all those concerned, work with the Planning Commission. Work with them to see a clear way forward through compromise and cooperation. But this business of one against another never solves anything. So let's just work together to make sure our kids are educated and the schools are built and everybody is happy, which is probably not going to happen, but please, at least cooperate with one another, because otherwise it just makes for a very anguish situation. Thank you.
Any hands in support of the speaker? May we have the next speaker to the microphone, please?
Oh, and by the way, go Hawks!
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, because I'm having trouble hearing most of you, because I think you're not close enough to the microphone. Just a point I want to make. All right, my name is Jill Brahm. I live at Providence Point. You probably guessed that. I'm going to tell a little bit of a different story than you've been hearing tonight. I worked for 40 years in the public schools. I was a member of the PTA, paying dues as a teacher before that was even heard of. I had to convince the PTA to take my money, but they, because they said, "Oh, but you're a teacher." I said, "But it's called Parent Teacher Association." So I have a master's in speech pathology and a doctorate in education. I have attended four meetings about this subject. One of them was canceled because the facility was not set up to be conducive that evening. As a member, as a resident of Providence Point, I would estimate, and this is very conservative according to my math, that we pay as a community about $3 million a year in taxes to Issaquah. So just keep that in mind. Where I live, the proposed stadium would be about five, let's be, let's be conservative, six to 650 feet from my door. Keep that in mind when you're making your decisions. I, do you know how fast I can walk that? Because I walk every day. I could probably make it there in about three minutes. If you helped me climb the fence, it'd probably be about seven minutes, and I could touch the stadium. And contrary to what you might have heard earlier this evening, property values will drop, because as you know, nobody wants to live that close to a stadium, particularly people who are in a retirement community or an age 55 or older community. And I want to tell you that property values aren't that strong right now, anyway. As I said, I attended, well, this is the fourth meeting. And before I came to this one, I looked at the social studies curriculum, Issaquah High School, or Issaquah School District, and it mentions, just on these two pages, developing critical thinking, no fewer than five times. It also says that one of the goals is that the students comprehend the ideals of democracy and strive to live their lives in accordance with them, that it should stimulate, and students stimulate interest in public affairs, strengthen competencies of self-government through citizen participation and experiences. Students are encouraged to inform themselves about public affairs and become active participants, and the, and Issaquah School District wants the students to realize a civic virtue of serving. Now, it was explained to me, because I'm relatively new to this community, I mean, I mean Washington State, that the Policy Planning Commission, Planning Policy Commission, I think it's called, are all volunteers. And when we started going to the meetings in September, there was an overwhelming number of Providence Point residents there. We politely explained the situation to the, to the Planning Commission. And as I saw this evolve, I saw democracy in action. And that commission arrived at a decision to make a recommendation that was well-founded on people who attended those meetings. And it would be a travesty if this council reversed or did not follow the recommendation, because it would be reversing the democratic action that occurred. That's my opinion, anyway. I would also like to say that it is my opinion that if the situation were reversed and the Planning Policy Commission upheld or recommended the rezoning, that the school district would be saying, "We must follow the recommendation." That's, that's my opinion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure.
Thank you. Many hands raised in support of the speaker.
Hello, my name is Ron Imhoff. My wife and I have lived at Providence Point in Issaquah for about one and a half years. I would like to talk about the site selection for a new high school and the enrollment projection that determined the need for a high school. We have heard that over 70 parcels and 700 acres were considered in the search, but we don't know where they were or what reasons they were rejected. A little more transparency would certainly help assure us that due diligence occurred. We have also heard that there is a need for the school because of the projected increase of high school age students. When the 2016 bond was proposed, both conservative and moderate projections said that there would be over 6,000 students by 2019. Current 2019 student population projection is 5819, 200 to 300 less. According to the school board letter, the current schools were said to be built for 1,800 students. But according to the school facilities plan, the permanent capacity of Issaquah High is 2,200, and Skyline, 1,968. That is almost 600 more. Maybe we need an independent data scientist to verify the numbers, growth projections, and assumptions in the models, or maybe we need updated numbers after the 2020 census. What is the most important rule in real estate? Isn't it location, location, location? But where can we place the new high school in keeping with that rule? If Issaquah growth is planned for central Issaquah, it would be better and safer for the new schools to be placed in the central Issaquah area. Perhaps the 2018 Park Strategic Plan actually has the solution. In it was the goal to strengthen and formalize relationships with partners, including Issaquah School District, King County, and Washington State, to improve intergovernmental collaboration. If that is the case, then maybe the location of the new high school should be at Tibbetts Valley Park. It's close to transit and the growth of the city, and the facilities could be shared. Or maybe a small section of Lake Sumamish State Park should be used for the school. Because it is right next to the East Lake Sumamish Trail, it would facilitate walking and biking to school. However, if the school does belong on the Sumamish Plateau because of growth in the Highlands area, then perhaps a better location for that high school would be the Pacific Cascade Middle School Site. At least it might help eliminate some of the old-town cut-through traffic that we heard about recently that is coming down from the Highlands to go to the Issaquah High School. I realize that Pacific Cascade happens to be just outside of the urban growth boundary, but I'm sure there are plenty of smart people in city, county, and state government who can figure out how to get that boundary adjusted. Because of those reasons, the City Council should uphold the Planning Commission recommendations on Parcel 1, 2, and 3. Thank you for considering.
Thank you. Hands raised in support of the speaker.
The next four speakers are Mark Zamuda, Daphne Gan, Marnie Meraldo, and Kelly Munn.
Hi, good evening. My name is Mark Jurgens Zamuda. I happen to live at 2236 Northwest Stony Creek Drive that's in the Talus community. I moved here in 2012 from the East Coast and fell in love with the City of Issaquah, and I've been in education for over 20 years. I have a three-year-old son who is also living with me currently in the City of Issaquah and will, in the next couple of years, be very soonly starting kindergarten as part of the Issaquah School District. So I'm a resident, property owner, parent. I also happen to be the assistant principal at Issaquah High School. My concern is obviously with the overcrowding that we have in our school district, in our schools, so I don't want to rehash my whole speech about what I was going to say earlier, because it is a lot of the same comments you've heard before. But I do just want to talk from the perspective of an assistant principal at Issaquah High School. On my caseload, when I first came to Issaquah High School three years ago, I had over 800 students on my caseload that I personally had to work with on a daily basis, with scheduling, with conflicts, with overcrowding and stuff there at the school, mental health issues, grading concerns, and so forth. Overcrowding makes teaching and learning so much more difficult for our schools and for our teachers. I think the biggest thing that we lose with overcrowding is these personal connections with our students. Our teachers are not able to check for understanding, they're not able to check for strengths and weaknesses, because they're constantly dealing with issues in these overcrowded classrooms. Every child has the right to attention and support in which they need, and I'm hoping that you'll move forward with pushing through to get us another high school and middle school. After hearing some of the concerns about building this new high school, specifically in Providence Point, I live in Talus, and there will also possibly be a new parcel at the very bottom of my hill where a new middle school will be built. I'm excited about the relationships that can be formed between adults and students, so I'm hoping that both properties will be moved forward. I am concerned, obviously, with demands that happen in our schools, obviously with traffic congestion, not only with vehicles, but then also in the hallways themselves. We've already heard about mental health concerns and then stuff that I deal with on a daily basis, including over 1,200 students trying to fight for two lunch periods to get food on a daily basis. We have seen increase in classroom discipline and mental health concerns, and I'm also concerned, obviously, for our teaching staff and our teachers. So many of our teachers are constantly not able to give that one-to-one important attention to our students. I'm hoping, again, for the good quality of our teachers and the sanity of the adults that we hope to keep on our staff that will move forward with these two properties. So thank you.
Thank you. Many hands raised in support of the speaker.
I'm Daphne Gan. I live in Providence Point. I'm here to support the decision made by the Planning Commission to deny the request for the rezone of the Providence Heights property. And I'm here to tell you why. I'm a member of the, or I was a member of the Government Affairs Committee, and so I have worked with City Council many times over the last few years. And as a, part of my job is to have listening sessions with the residents and with the school district. And we had a nice session with the superintendent almost two years ago in which he said, "Oh, we are going to be good neighbors. We're going to collaborate." And in all this time, we have had no communication with the school district, and when we called them, you know what they told us? "We can't talk to you till we own the property." But I had a listening session the minute that I knew they hired a design-build contractor, because in the design work is when you need to have the communication with the people you're going to be very much imposing upon. Now, I'm going to tell you what the ladies and men said at the listening session I held. Approximately 20, 30% of them were retired schoolteachers, and many of the other ones have children and grandchildren in the Issaquah School District. These people like children. They like schools. We supported the bond issue. And yet, when it comes time to build a high school with a stadium right in our backyard, you ignored us. And I want you to know, I played bridge with somebody who lives right on the edge of the site, and we're playing bridge while they're doing the demolition. You could not bid without yelling, because it was so noisy. If you don't think it's going to be hell for those people in Providence Point during the construction and in the athletic activities, you are kidding yourself. It is not going to be nice. I also, at this bridge party at my friend's, I found out she has cancer, and she's going to spend two years probably with us. And she needs to sell her condo. And if you think, already, people are telling us, the real estate agents are telling us, they're turning away people who want to buy the condo, because they don't want to look out under that. out under that. The one thing that the people wanted in Providence Point is a barrier between the school and Providence Point. They wanted a very sturdy vegetative boundary. They don't want you to cut down all the trees. The plan that the school district has, chop everything tree down. If you think that we put our hand out to the school district and want to be collaborative, and you know what they did? They bit the hand that fed them. And we pay taxes, twice a year, I write a check of which $1,200 go to the school district. And I'll tell you, I am never paying, I'm never going to vote for another bond issue for the school district because they did not value the people who are paying the bills. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Many hands raised in support of the speaker.
I thank you, council members, for this opportunity to speak to you this evening. My name is Marnie Maraldo. I reside in Newcastle, as many of the residents of the Issaquah School District do not reside in the city of Issaquah, even though you are our namesake. I am a member of the Issaquah School Board, have been for 10 years. I'm also the board's legislative representative. And tonight, I'd like to talk briefly about the recommendation from the city's Policy Planning Commission on October 24th, which, by the way, the board members were not actively involved in that because we were conducting our own meeting as a government body having our own board meeting. Given the importance of the relationship between our two elected groups, I want to make it clear that the board understands that this is a recommendation from the PDC to the council and not a recommendation developed by the council. The school district, as you know, is looking for a redesignation and rezoning of the Providence Heights and the Tallis properties to community facilities facilities. This designation would allow us to build a much-needed elementary, high school, and middle school, fulfilling the promise we gave to our constituents back in 216, who graciously approved our request for the $533 million bonding capacity. As you may know, the board approved eminent domain proceedings, approved eminent domain proceedings to obtain that property of the Providence Heights property back in July of 2016. In December of 2012, the King County Council approved updates to the King County Growth Management Act, making it no longer tenable for the district to build schools outside the urban growth boundary. And a comprehensive high school of this size required by the district would not be allowed outside the growth boundary. For years, the district has done extensive research to catalog available open land on which to build schools. We have watched as more and more large swaths of property have become redeveloped for housing and grow concerned about the limited space on which to build needed schools within the UGB. We are dependent on municipalities working with us as we obtain needed property to support the buildings of these critical community facilities. Fortunately, the city of Issaquah has a very clear policies in the comprehensive plan to guide the city council in its decision-making. Land Use Policies 3 through G3 through G7 are specific policies to speak to the council and to the board as we do our work together, including partnering with the Issaquah School District to cite compact schools to meet the anticipated growth throughout the district. And mind you, that's throughout the district even beyond the Issaquah city borders. We have patiently waited three and a half years through legal turmoil between the previous Providence Heights property owners and the Community Preservation Group and have just recently obtained that property. We've played this waiting game because, given the GMA restrictions, our extensive search for available open property to cite a new high school, there really is no other options. And I say that knowing that there are other options, but they require us to actually evict people from their homes or businesses. So when we talk about no other options, that really isn't an option for us on the school board. Now, we're looking to you to use these guiding principles in your comprehensive plan. The Issaquah School Board recognizes the helpful purpose of a community advisory committee and what they provide. You may be aware that we have our own levy and bond committees. The past two levy committees provided recommendations to the board that, in the end, the board extended, felt it extended our taxpayers beyond what they could feasibly provide to us. And so we balanced this with the needs of students, and we chose to not take the recommendation of our committee. So my ask for you is that you consider the recommendation being made before you in light of the recommendation from staff and your committee. The committee decision, unbeknownst probably to them, not understanding the difficulties between two governing bodies working together, their decision has led the council, has put it so that the council, not the school board, would be making the final determination on where to build schools. It has the city council, not the school district, deciding on the use of taxpayer dollars, half of which the council is not even accountable to. It means that the city council, not the school board, perpetuates the overcrowding in our schools. I don't think the PCC meant for you to be in that position. That's why I ask you to accept the city staff's original recommendation and rezon the Providence Heights and the Tallis properties, community facilities facility.
Thank you. Hands raised in support of that speaker.
Hello, my name is Kelly Munn. I'm a new resident in downtown Issaquah on 245 Second Avenue. I love this city. I came down from the Plateau. You guys have built a fabulous town. I just have to say that. I would like you to please zone the Providence Point Community Facilities facility. Clearly, this is a hot topic here, and clearly, there's a breakdown in trust. I was, I had a whole speech I was going to give, and I'm throwing it out, so I'm winging it here. But here's how I see it. You guys have a problem. You guys have a problem. You guys have a problem. There's three people have problems. The system is set up so that there's policies, and those policies are set, and the staff built a plan that based the policies. So the staff has presented a plan that meets the policies. The Advisory Council, PPE, whatever it's called, is, has been asked to come up with what their solutions are, and they're not referencing the staff or the policies. But they were referencing the community, which matters a lot. We have a fabulous community. You guys are faced with a rough problem. School district is great. City council is great. You guys are great supporters of schools. We need you all to work together somehow if this has to be figured out in a way. Now, here's what I know to be true. I understand why Providence Point won't get it, but I've worked with and alongside Superintendent Thiele for years, and what he says he's going to do, he will do. And he will apologize if he did it or doesn't, or if he makes a mistake, and he will make retribution. He will. Because we can do yes or no when somebody wins, and that's nobody wins. We are Issaquah. We can do better than the rest of the communities out there that are struggling and fighting against each other. We can do better.
Thank you. Many hands raised in support. I also want to acknowledge that we do have an overflow seating. There's approximately 30 people, I believe, in the overflow seating, and they are also raising hands in support for a number of the speakers.
The next four speakers are Sue Ann Bolins, Rick Aramburu, Leo Graham, and Harlan Gallinger.
Good evening. I'm Sue Ann Bolins. I'm a resident at Providence Point, and I'm the chair of the Providence Point Umbrella Association. Providence Point, and Ron, maybe you can hold up this poster here. So Providence Point is an active 55-plus retirement community built as part of a vision established by the Sisters of Providence almost 50 years ago. The idea was to provide a tranquil setting for seniors to live out their retirement years. In addition to Providence Point, there's Bellwood, which is assisted living, Marionwood, which is skilled nursing care, and Spiritwood for memory care. These communities are wrapped around the parcel of land that's being considered for high school and elementary school. To state the obvious, there are no children in any of these communities, these surrounding communities, that would make use of the proposed schools. So folks are talking about policy here, and I know a question came up earlier. Issaquah Municipal Code 1804-632D states that a rezone request must meet certain criteria before it can be approved. One of those criteria is, and I quote, "No detriment to adjacent property. The rezone will not be materially detrimental to uses or property in the immediate vicinity of the subject property." So Ron, maybe you can hold up this other drawing that shows the proposed school layout superimposed on that space. The proposed rezoning and construction of two schools will have significant detrimental impact on both the quality of life and the property values for residents of Providence Point. Approximately 40% of the Providence Point residents live in buildings that directly border the Providence Heights property. Whereas these buildings now border property with significant trees and wildlife, almost all of the trees would be removed so that every square inch of the property can be repurposed with multi-story school buildings, sports fields, parking lots. The proposed layout shows a football stadium, and that will have bright lights and noise. Batting cages and baseball fields are located within a few feet of Providence Point residential buildings. What is currently a tranquil setting for a community that is occupied by about 85% retirees who are home all day long will become a noisy, chaotic environment with bright lights, buses, cars, marching bands, football and baseball games, and other activity. Property values at Providence Point have already been adversely impacted by the concern of schools being built. We see emails and letters from the Issaquah School District representatives indicating their work with Providence Point to address their concerns. However, actions speak much louder than words. Repeated attempts to meet with them have been unsuccessful and brushed off. Yet, they've been spending taxpayer dollars on a school layout published on their website last summer, and earlier this year, they worked to get the school use model changed to the compact or urban guidelines. These guidelines require less acreage for schools, but they also expect schools to share sports fields with nearby schools. The ISD design is not following the urban guidelines and has specked out a full array of sports fields for two schools that have been crammed onto a 40-acre parcel. If the ISD has granted the request for rezoning, they will be under no obligation to make any accommodations to address the detrimental impact to the community. Their actions and recently published letters on the website, especially from the chair of the school board, indicate they cannot even accommodate a tree buffer between the property and Providence Point as recommended by the Planning Policy Commission, and this is further evidence that they will proceed as they wish with no consideration for their neighbors. I fully support the need for schools and recognize the challenges facing the east side and the growing population in the crowded classrooms. I believe many or most residents of Providence Point share that view. However, the Providence Heights property is not suited for comprehensive high school and elementary school. Furthermore, it's not acceptable for the school district to forge ahead with a plan that has significant detrimental impact to the adjacent community. We hope the city council considers the municipal code, the recommendations from the Policy Planning Commission, and the testimony submitted regarding the detrimental impact to the surrounding properties and denies the request to change the zoning. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Many hands raised in support of the speaker.
Good evening. I'm Richard Aramburu. I'm an attorney in Seattle, and I'm here tonight representing the Providence Point Umbrella Board. And I want to bring the council down to what its real business is here tonight. And the council has adopted a municipal code and has established set criteria for decisions about zoning, rezoning, and comprehensive plan amendments. Those have been part of the code for years and years. The question is not whether schools, more school space is needed, which it is, but the question is whether or not this property meets the standards in the code. And I'll tell you, I've been to meetings like this for the greater part of my professional life, but I'll have to say that I've never come to a meeting in which staff does not present a staff report that includes an analysis of the criteria necessary for this council to be met. They're leaving you adrift in terms of your decision-making. That's not the way the system works. That's not the way the rule of law works. We have a situation here where there's 10 criteria. Sue Ann just mentioned one of them. Is it materially detrimental to the adjacent property? Staff doesn't say a word about that. There's no analysis of that. Now, when there was analysis of these factors in the course of the meetings before the Planning Policy Commission, we presented expert testimony from land use planners, from transportation planners, and from other residents of the area who had studied the situation. This was substantial evidence about whether or not this property is suitable for schools. This testimony is not even acknowledged by the staff. It's not even discussed by the staff. When have you come to a hearing, a land use hearing, and you don't have a staff report? We don't have a staff report that talks about what the criteria are. I mean, this is not the fitting of decision-making in the city of Issaquah. And one of, one of the criteria, or several of the criteria met, deal with this specific property. And I guess I'd ask members of the council, and to some extent, members of the audience, whether they've looked at the actual plans that the district has for this property. It mows down essentially every tree on the property. Every tree that goes between this property and Providence Point is mowed down. If you want to look at what their analysis of the project is, go to the city's website where they presented materials, where they have presented materials that show that their plan has a substantial wooded buffer around it. It does not exist. It is misleading material. This property isn't suitable for this kind of use. And I'll give you just one basic example. They're talking about 2,000 students, 600 elementary school students, staff, various other people going to the site, and there's one entrance. What happens if there's a fire? What happens if there's an emergency? What happens, God forgive us, that there's an active shooter situation, and we all have to go in and out on one steep route to this site? I mean, it's amazing just to think that something like that would even be considered in this day and age of school planning. That's the kind of material we presented to the Policy Planning Commission. Their job, as you've given them, as a council, is to act as a research and fact-finding agency of the city in making these land use decisions. They had three meetings about this. They listened carefully to all the people who spoke. Most of the people here tonight didn't come, I don't know why, but the other job they have is to conduct these public hearings and do this kind of careful research. That's what they did. The Policy Planning Commission reached a careful decision, and that careful decision was not to adopt the rezoning proposed for Parcells 1 and 2, and to change the zoning on Parcel 3, the one closest to the Providence Point community, to community facilities open space. We believe that that decision of the Policy Planning Commission should be accepted by the council. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Many hands in support of the speaker.
Thank you. My name is Leo Graham. I live in Providence Point. I'm the chair of the Government Affairs Committee at Providence Point. I'm not going to reiterate all that's been said so far, thankfully, I guess, but I do want to make a couple of comments, and that is the efforts that Providence Point has made to reach out to the school district. We didn't come to this lately and just say, "Oh, we don't want schools. We like schools. We like kids. Our kids live in the neighborhood. Our grandkids live in the neighborhood. They go or will go to these schools." It's the site and the plan that we had a problem with. Last summer, last winter, I reached out Last summer, last winter, I reached out and went to a school district meeting, reached out, said we'd love to talk to you about what you're doing with the site, how you're going to design it. The preliminary plans we saw left a great buffer of trees, sited things closer to the road. We wanted to talk about issues. I was told consistently, subsequent to that, that they could not speak to us because they did not own the property yet. And yet, they went forward with the design. We saw the design ultimately on their website. We reached out again and said, will you please talk to us? This design is entirely different than what we were led to believe. And then, again, met with the same comment. And I have emails to support this that said, we cannot talk to you, we do not own the site yet. Now they own the site, and they come to the city, ask for a rezon. The rezon will accommodate this plan, which has already been stated, will cut down all the trees, put in a stadium, put in two schools, one access. There are buildings that will be sixty-five foot tall, within seven feet of the property line in some cases, and twenty feet away from our community buildings with people living in condos three stories tall, looking at the back of a sixty-foot, sixty-five-foot-high block wall, and/or a sports stadium that in some cases will be maybe 100 to 200 yards away, on top of everything else. That's a different plan than we were talking about three years ago. So that's why the Providence Point citizens came forward and have objected to this plan. Now, I hope, after the due consideration that your planning, Policy Planning Commission had, I mean, they read everything we presented, listened, discussed it in great detail, talked with staff. Staff indicated to them that if they rezon it for the community facilities under the new guidelines that you adopted earlier in the year, last year, they can build this with almost no conditions because it'll meet the guidelines. That's why we're here. And I hope you will give very close consideration to the presentation that was made at the Policy Planning Commission and why they recommended what they recommended. Thank you.
Thank you. Many hands raised in the air in support of the speaker. I do also want to remind the speakers to please direct your comments to the council. With that, the next speaker, please come forward.
Hi.
Thank you.
My name is Harlan Gallinger. I'm currently President of the Issaquah School Board, and on behalf of the 21,000 students and families, I'm here to provide a statement to you. I'm sorry that I missed all the previous ones, so I may be repeating some things. So we're here requesting that, on behalf of all of our shared constituents, that you look at and consider your proposed amendment to the City of Issaquah Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Map to be able to accommodate the approval of the site for community facilities, facilities redesignation. This is really important so we can move forward with planning of our two schools on that site, which our voters overwhelmingly improved by almost seventy-two percent. So what's really important to know is that we have finite resources, just like you do. And for us, every delay costs our taxpayers eight million dollars a year. And so that's a really important number because we want to deliver our projects on budget for what our taxpayers have been promised. And it's really important that we can do that, and we can't do that unless we work collaboratively with you all, and that's why we're here tonight. So the other thing that I want to point out is that we have worked tirelessly with development of all of our school sites. You may know all of our comprehensive high schools have neighborhoods around all of them. And we work with our local neighborhoods to make sure that we can do everything we can to mitigate the impact. We know the impact of elementary schools versus high schools is different, but we recognize that we want to do that. I do want to make it clear that the proposed site plan was only purely a proposal, nowhere near to final, and I'm pretty sure that you guys will actually have final say on any site plan, which is great. The other thing is, I certainly can say that there is not a plan to mow down all the trees. We certainly have tried to save every tree we can, any redevelopment that we've done, whether it's at Pine Lake or Sunny Hills or any other site that I know that that's what we do. I know that our district has reached out to Providence Point and will continue to do that in order to make sure that we can do everything we can to work with them to build a school that meets the needs and desires of the character of the neighborhood. Lastly, what I wanted to say is that it's really important that it's our fiduciary responsibility to talk about the financial impact, and we want to say that we are unequivocally opposed to the Planning Policy Commission's recommendation and any attempt to designate a school district-owned parcel as open space. So the Planning Policy Commission's recommendation was made without district input. Like you, we have many meetings, and we were actually in a school meeting at that same time, so we weren't able to be there. It renders six acres of developable public land unusable, and so if the city will not move forward with a proposed redesignation to community facilities, facilities, we would request that the city take no action to change the map designation and zoning. Lastly, we, as Issaquah School Board, value the district's partnership with the city, and we value our opportunity to partner with you, the City Council, on behalf of all of our shared constituents. So, thank you.
Thank you. Many hands raised in support of the speaker. Tisha, do we have more speakers?
Yes. The next three speakers are Gary Arthur, Paul Claypool, and Julia Bamba.
My name is Gary Arthur. I'm serving right now as the President of the Teachers Association here in Issaquah. I represent nearly fourteen hundred certificated staff members who work with the children who are in these overcrowded schools that you've heard about. I have a speech prepared, but so much of it would be redundant that I'm going to go off script slightly and be done in under five minutes. Everyone should raise their hands for that one. I would like to say that in listening to some of the concerns from the folks from Providence Point, that's heartbreaking, especially if you feel like you've not been listened to. And I want to make a case that in my job as the Teachers Union President, one of the things I do is work with the district a lot to try to solve problems. We don't solve every problem. If we did, I'd be out of a job. But we solve most of them, and I can say that from speaking, from the experience of having been on six bargaining teams with the district where we, those were post-2002 when the association went on strike, where we solve a variety of very complex problems. Everything from class size to teacher compensation to, something that touches right on this issue, we have science classrooms at Skyline High School that are being held, science classes being held in rooms that are not equipped for science. And so we had to find a workaround to figure out how do we compensate those teachers for all the extra time spent putting their science equipment up in a room that's not designed for science. That's a little example, and I could come up with literally hundreds of them, of how we work together. I really, really trust our school district, our school board, our superintendent, his cabinet. These are people who are committed to problem-solving. And I don't mean to dismiss the concerns of people that came up and said they didn't feel listened to, but knowing Ron Thiele the way I know him and Harlan Gallinger the way I know him, they're going to reach out, they're going to make sure that people feel listened to. The problems of overcrowding in our schools are very serious. Among the inconveniences of it, I think Andrea McCormick hit on something really important about teacher retention. Being a teacher's a hard job, and one thing that you don't want to do to your teachers is make their job a little bit harder. It's like, here's this fifty-pound box, how about I help you move it rather than stick another fifty-pound box on top of it? When you have teachers sharing class spaces or not going to the bathroom because they're far away from, so far away from a bathroom they can't reasonably get to, you risk making people feel like they don't matter, and the hard work that they do for our children could be easier if they went somewhere else. So I do hope that you'll consider zoning these properties for the high school and the elementary school because our schools are bursting at the seams. But I also hope you'll know that the kind of people that run our school district are thoughtful, they're listeners, they're problem solvers, and I really appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you. Many hands in support.
Good evening. My name is Paul Claypool. I'm also a resident of Providence Point. I had several things I was going to say tonight, and they've all been said. So I have a couple of things I want to hit on. We've been assured about the concern of the school district for buffers and all the kinds of things that they'll work with communities to achieve, and objecting to the statement that all the trees would be cut down. The preliminary designs that show what the school district wants to put on that property allow no room for a buffer. They're building right up to the limit of the boundaries, and there is no room to put a buffer in there, so they have to take away the trees that are there. I urge the council to include the concerns that have been raised tonight in their deliberations. Because of expressions of the thinking that shows up in the design and in other documents, if the council decides to approve rezoning to allow the schools and just leave it at that, we'll end up with what the preliminary designs show now, and those concerns that we have will not be addressed. Therefore, there needs to be registered with the council the fact that some conditions need to be applied if they're going to do that. I started out as here to speak in support of the recommendation to the Planning Policy Commission, not because I thought that was the ideal solution, but it was one we were left with. The council has, of course, the option to do several things with it, and I've suggested what I would consider a good decision in that respect. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Many hands in support of the speaker.
My name is Julia Bamba, and I live at 1428 14th Place Northeast in the Issaquah Highlands. I have lived in the, had the amazing opportunity to live and work in Issaquah while also raising my two boys, who are nine and eleven, and attend Clark Elementary. I started teaching and coaching at Issaquah High School in 2002, and shortly after that, my husband and I purchased a home in Issaquah. I continued to work at Issaquah High School from 2002 to 2015 in various positions, from teaching and coaching to becoming an assistant principal there in 2007. Over the last five years, I have been the principal of this amazing little school called Gibson Eck High School, if you've heard of it, where I've had the experience of what a small school can provide for students, families, staff, and partners and mentors in our community. Our campus also shares with Clark Elementary, furthering the opportunity to create partnerships among students across all ages. During my seventeen years of living and working in this community, I have seen changes, including growth, as well as how our schools have been impacted by the increase in enrollment. While I am completely aware that my family is just as much a part of this growth as others, I know that this growth is due to the strong sense of community in Issaquah. I should have had water because I was sitting back there for two hours next to the water fountain, so I apologize. It's kind of hitting me all of a sudden. So I know that we are here because of the strong sense of community, the presence of opportunities for our children, and the commitment to creating a place where families can thrive. Issaquah is an amazing place to be. The construction of new schools in the Issaquah School District is needed immediately to allow our already outstanding schools to become even better. The overcrowding in many of our schools, the challenges that students face, and the management must change to move us closer to the values that have been present in Issaquah since I moved here. I have experienced a school climate and culture at Issaquah High School in 2002 when the school's enrollment was just over fourteen hundred students. When I left Issaquah High School in 2015 to begin planning, it was just over 2,000 and has increased since then. I experienced a change in the community and the climate that was impacted only by the increase in the community. And while the new building was built for increased capacity, we felt how the increase in enrollment impacted the connections we had established within that community since 2002. I'll just skip ahead because some of the other stuff has already been said by our earlier community members. So I hope that my kids who are graduating in 2027 and 2028 have the opportunity to thrive in new schools and continue to build the communities that we need. Thank you.
Thank you. Many hands raised in support of the speaker. That is the end of our list of speakers that have signed up to speak this evening. In the second half of public comments, we heard comment both for and against the administration's recommendation regarding rezoning of parcels at Providence Point. We heard concerns about the proximity of school facilities to residences, concerns about the stadium in particular, as well as concerns about construction. We also heard comments regarding the Planning Policy Commission's recommendation, both for and against, and we heard comments about the importance of working with the neighborhood and partnership, as well as hearing teachers' perspective and more information about conditions within our schools and more information from the perspective of the school board representatives. If there is any additional information, any additional information that you would like the council to hear in public comments or additional perspectives, we do have approximately ten or fifteen minutes remaining in our two-hour public comment period, and so we can allow up to three more speakers if there are any other additional members of the public wishing to comment this evening. And so in that case, if you could please come to the podium or line up behind the podium if there are additional speakers.
Always. Always wear pajamas. Saying always wear pajamas is what I was saying. My name is Connie Marshall, live on Squawk Mountain. I just heard comments about my PJs behind. It's my long days. So I've been working with the school district for many, 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 many years, trying to get them to protect trees, and they don't very well. I've worked with the school district trying to get them to pick up garbage and actually maintain their properties, and they don't very well. I've worked with the school district for many years trying to get them to actually do what they promise, and frankly, they don't very well. We've had several different meetings within the last couple of years where the school district has brought their folks to meetings, and they've expressed eloquently how important education is. Well, we know that. It's equally important to provide for the rest of the community because their children will age, and their children will also want to be able to live in a quiet place that they prefer without sudden impacts around their edges that actually don't... I'm going to back up just for a second. When you rezon, it's true, the code says, you cannot detrimentally impact your adjacent neighbors. So yes, we all want good schools. What I did not hear tonight is what I wanted to hear, which was, wow, we don't need a football field for a high school. We can figure out another way. We actually are going to schedule a meeting with a certain date and time with people to make sure that you get your forested buffer, and here's that date and time right now. And without those total time-dedicated commitments, I just don't believe it. Now, I've dealt with them for so many years. It's just my reality. I believe the code should describe what our town should be for everyone, and if there are going to be detrimental impacts or unresolved SEPA issues, then you cannot rezon it until that is resolved. So after the school district would say, this is our new plan, and there will be no impacts to the adjacent neighbors, then you could vote to rezon the parcel appropriately. You can't just go on faith. That is not what the code is for. So you can make a good decision, and everybody could win, which would be awesome, because I would actually like the school district to do something awesome so I could celebrate them instead of pound them, because I'm sort of tired of pounding the school district. Is this only about school district? Did I miss my other zoning comment? The other one is about the Parcel 12, and it is being zoned community facilities, facilities, when most... when most of it is a mitigation and it's a critical area. So what I would like is I would like for you to say that the critical areas would be zoned community facilities, open space, and you would carve off that road section of that parcel and put it into right-of-way in the future, but not zoned it community facilities, facilities, because I don't want to have to track it 15 years down the road when somebody says, wow, we can build something there, because that's community facilities, facilities, when it's actually a mitigation for an impact. Thanks.
Thank you. Many hands raised in support of the speaker.
Let me just lower this. Hi, my name is Caitlin Miller. I am currently an eighth grader at PCMS, and our school is overcrowded. I have to plan my day going through the hallways and only going to my locker once. I'm scared that again I will have textbooks dropped to my head or tripped again. My classes are overcrowded with around 31 to 32 students in every single class. This is making learning very hard and difficult. We are having less participation because the teachers are unable to control this many students. Adding up, we're not learning as our full capacity we can. If we take this down and put in this new high school, we are able to get a better future as Isaguá. We want that same education as you guys did in the past. We want to make this change and it needs to be now, because it's happening now. Our population is increasing every single year, and every single year, more and more students come to our middle schools, elementary schools, and high schools, and they're adding up. If we don't do something now, if we don't make this change of adding this public high school now, our population and this capacity in our high schools would get worse. Our education would get worse. I, as an eighth grader, want to stay for my whole school, is that we want to take this action now. We want to get this education, and we want to make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Many hands raised in support of the speaker. And that is our last speaker for public comments. So with that, we can now move to our council discussion if there are questions for council that have been raised during the public comment or if we have additional discussion. Councilmember Winterstein?
Actually, I have a technical question. We did hear comments tonight about impacts, and I'm wondering if we can consider those or those should be not considered for the quasi-judicial element of our future decision.
You can consider those in the compatibility and using the criteria relating to the comprehensive plan and zoning code amendments. In the SEPA appeal, you are limited to considering what is going to be presented on December 2nd.
Right, thank you.
Councilmember Winterstein?
Yeah, there was a comment made tonight, actually a question asked earlier by my colleague here, and then a comment made tonight, that that criteria for decision-making, I would very much value actually having a very clear accounting of that. Now, Trish, you mentioned earlier what approach you used and what's in the material that I have to consider with your checkbox there, but I would value having a more, just a more thorough accounting of that. This piece of code is large, there's a lot of steps there, and I just think that as one of the decision-makers here, it's important that we're all able to be, to complete our due diligence that's required of us.
Council Deputy President Batiste?
So I'm just going to echo what Councilmember Winterstein talked about. That was probably the number one question that I had, is just seeing a more thorough evaluation of the criteria as we go forward.
Council President Martz?
Thank you. I want to echo the need for additional information. Much of this comes down to, for me, this question about detrimental impact. I am skeptical about this because it seems like if it was inherent that any high school would have a detrimental impact on its neighborhood, then no high schools would ever be built. I'm lucky enough to go to St. Michael's Episcopal, which is also lucky enough to be within a stone's throw of Isaguá High School, Isaguá Middle School, Gibson Eck, and Clark Elementary, and it's a wonderful neighborhood. And it's not perfect, and the city struggles with the challenges of a large and overloaded high school, but the city and the district do a good job. And so I really need to understand this issue better and have my skepticism addressed on this argument. There's also this question around conditions, and here again, I want to be careful because we can't talk about SEPA issues, but a number of questions have been raised about our ability downstream to impact the design of what will eventually be built. And so in a future meeting, I need to understand what the council's role will be and, again, within the guidelines of, you know, SEPA things will be SEPA, non-SEPA things will not be SEPA, what the levers are for the council to address perceived issues if we go forward with an approval with potential conditions. Thank you.
Councilmember Goodman, followed by Councilmember Ray.
Thank you. So I want to, everybody knows where my head's at because I kind of suggested it earlier. So I want to state the information that I will need, and I want to state it a little bit more strongly. The two codes that I referenced earlier are not just more information. They say, they say only if. So we have codes that we need to follow, and that analysis needs to be in the agenda bill that comes forward, if we get an agenda bill that comes forward. And it has to be, the analysis has to go through the criteria, like we're supposed to do, and again, it says only if, and I think it needs to be very thoughtful, and that's one. And then number two is I'd like some more information on parcel 12. I'd like some history, some context, why there's a road through it, mitigation. We may even need some language from the agreements that we have from that road project to let us know how we got here, and there are questions about why it's, why the proposal is to rezone I, at this point, my comment is that I completely agree with Mr. Ramaru's comment about what the issue is. The issue's not overcrowding. There isn't anybody here that I think that would disagree that there's overcrowding. And there isn't anybody here that I know of who doesn't like kids. Most of us have kids. I have kids. I moved here because of the schools in the eighties, and of course, we have a wonderful community, and the schools are overcrowded for several reasons. One is the growth, but one is the planning horizon that the school district has. They plan differently than municipalities and counties, and I respect that and I understand that. It's not simply because we have growth, and the school district plans for students to be in the houses or close to being in those houses before they build schools because they can't build empty schools. I understand that and I appreciate that. But the question isn't overcrowding, and so I think the question before us has to do with the decision, which is about whether or not we've met the criteria for the proposals that are brought before us. And I think it's unfortunate that that structure and that criteria was not in all of the proposals that were put before the Planning Policy Commission for three meetings, and this makes meeting number four before the city council, and we don't have that analysis. I'm very disappointed in that, and I think that we would have potentially had a more clear substantive process if that information had been in our packet and had been in the packets before the Planning Policy Commission. So to me, the question is really what was mentioned earlier, which is whether this property meets the standards in the code. And that's the question that should have been answered in the packets in the three meetings prior and the meetings that, the meeting that we're having tonight. That's my disappointment, and I hope that we have the information that we need coming forward, and I hope that it's analyzed appropriately and objectively, and I look forward to receiving that information. Can I say one more thing? I appreciate the acknowledgement that there needs to be a better job done with the neighbors of this property going forward, and I appreciate that acknowledgement.
Thank you. Councilmember Ray?
No, there's a, well, first thing, this is amazing, and thank you all for coming out and sharing your thoughts with us. This was an education that I got better than you were giving the kids in Isaguá, so thank you for that. There are a lot of things that we agree on. We agree that our schools are overcrowded. We agree that overcrowding is having an impact on both students and our faculty, and we also agree that land, particularly with inside the urban growth boundary, is very scarce. The best thing I heard tonight, and I heard lots of great stuff, was work together and problem solve, and so I'm struck with, we have some very difficult challenges. We have a bar that we've established in the city code about what constitutes something that can be rezoned. And so what I would like to see come back in addition to an assessment of the criteria about for a rezone, I'd like to see some alternatives. I'd like to see some creativity. I'd like to see how we can address some of these problems that people are putting on the table and come up with a solution, because I think there's a solution out there if we do that and we can find a way to blend that into our discussion around zoning. So my ask for the comeback when we do this again is some ideas about how we can do this differently that will address both the criteria for doing a rezone and also recognize that we have some serious issues affecting the kids in this school district.
Thank you. Councilmember Walsh?
Thank you. So I would like to second, third, whatever it is, the idea that we need to closely look at Title 18.04.632D, the approval criteria. Ideally, I would like that to come back to us as a checklist where each of those items is addressed, and I think at this point, my concern is D6, no detriment to adjacent property. I do not understand as a council member how I, where the line is on that, because the idea that anything built next to anything else would have a detrimental effect, and so I don't know, looking at the code, whether legally, whether we're allowed to interpret that as seven feet as buffer is okay or 50 feet. How we negotiate that conversation from our perspective to act within the code would be very helpful. The other thing I would like to look into a little bit more, those on the staff will understand, that I like to look at similar situations that have happened in the past and learn from those. So I know we have high schools within the district, some of which are in our city, some of which are in Sumamish and other cities, that are within and nearby residential zones. I would like to understand how the initial site plans were then morphed, both from a staff perspective, how feedback was given to the school district, and how that adjustment was made, so that we can have a clearer idea as a council and a community about the transparency of how some of those things progress, because I know from looking at other site plans and permits as they have adjusted over time, irrespective of schools, that changes get made. And I know our staff has not done the due diligence review on this, so I want to look at other examples that give us an idea of how this is going to react over time. And then I would also turn to the community and say, I very much appreciate this feedback. I don't know if we have stated, but we do have two members here who have kids in the school district, so we are very aware, and many others who have gone through, but I'm talking current now, we are very much aware of that impact. What I have heard, which was really heartbreaking to me, was the concept of not being heard as the Providence Point community, and that breaks my heart. And so what I'm going to be looking from the school district is how you can be responsive to that, because I don't want to live in a community that isn't being, isn't working together. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Winterstein, followed by Councilmember Batiste?
I've already made comments once, and I know, Victoria, you may want to make your own, so I'm willing to defer my second opportunity if you want to make yours first.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate that. I did have a question, which is around the timeline. So you had mentioned that Planning Policy Commission's recommendation was a draft? Is that correct?
They did their draft findings of fact at the end of the public hearing and were taking the draft, because they changed so much of what was in the original draft, that we're making sure that they are comfortable and totally agree with the findings of fact and recommendations to actually sign off on it, because there was so much that was changed. And that should happen Thursday night if all goes well.
So then, with that timeline, council would have that information?
Correct.
This week? Okay. I had another question regarding timeline around, there were some comments made around a delay, and it's my understanding that we currently, for this zoning process, are not experiencing a delay from the perspective of the city. Is that correct?
A delay in the...
In the process.
Oh, correct. If all goes well and we're able to adapt on the 16th, then the capital facilities element will be in place when the impact fees take effect January 1. Is that what you mean by the delay and the... Right, right. But that's the one delay that would have, we would have had to change the dates of the complaint, or the impact fees.
Okay. So to clarify, there's not?
Correct.
Not a delay currently? Okay. I did wonder, so the deadline for the comp plan amendments is January 1. Is that correct?
I think it has to be before, because there's the five-day, or I shouldn't say the five-day, there's that time that after you approve something that it takes effect, and so the impact fees are already taking effect January 1. But I don't know what that exact timeframe is.
Okay. Before the end of the year? Okay. Okay, just to give us some thoughts on what kind of timing we have and where the timeline is currently. I have one comment that doesn't really fit in, but was mentioned in one public comment, which is regarding the parcel 12. So I think that in our information that was provided, we do not, in my opinion, have adequate information about why that should be community facilities, facilities, when there's no possibility of building on that parcel under the native growth protection easement that it's under. So that doesn't make sense to me, and then that one of the reasons why we might not do that is because it costs the $5,000 to do a lot adjustment also doesn't convince me. So I would like more information about why we're doing that, and I would also very strongly like to have an option to present it to council with the rationale for why we might consider an alternative, which would be to do the lot adjustment for the part of parcel 12 that is a road, so that the other area, which is currently used for mitigation and which is under a native growth protection act easement, would be appropriately, in my opinion, zoned. And then I want to echo my fellow councilmembers. Thanks to the many people that came out and gave public comments on this topic. I know it affects many people, and we've also received many emails on this topic, and I also want to acknowledge the people that took the time to send in their comments by email. I also think it would be very important to have a staff report regarding the criteria that are, that council... that are, that, that council must adhere to to do a rezone. So some of these issues that, that are in our code, we've not been able to discuss with the public, also because there's issues that we can't discuss under the upcoming CIPA appeal. And so it's, it's hard, I think, to make a decision when there's some issues that can be discussed and some that can't. And so I think it would be very, very helpful to have information, a staff report on the issues that have been raised. For example, this IMC 18.04 point six three D, item six, which is the rezone must not be a detriment to adjacent property. So we, as council, are tasked with assessing that, and I think we need specific information about that. And I think we need specific options about how our rezone applies or rezone meets these criteria. So that's, that's also very important for me, for my decision-making.
Okay. Does any council member also have further comments? Councilmember Winterstein.
Thank you. I have four separate points I want to make. First, the easy one, parcels 12 and 13, as was earlier mentioned. Actually, don't need more information. I would urge us, I would like to see us actually do that lot line adjustment. That parcel, and I believe that's, well, I'm not sure if it's 12 or 13, where the, where the part of the road?
12.
It's 12, right? For, for future consideration, I, I really do want that to be zoned, community facilities, open space. And so let's make that lot line adjustment to encompass the portion that is covered by the road and just eliminate that from possible consideration, that the fact that instead of facilities, as it's being recommended now, to make a lot line adjustment so we can make that parcel 12 open space and eliminate that possibility. That was number one. This is a little bit of a different comment. I did watch the PPC, the last PPC meeting, and, and I was, very interestingly, the vote that one was taken was actually three to three. But then during the meeting, for some reason, the alternatives vote wasn't counted. They have some rule that I didn't understand. But that vote was three to three on a motion that actually was the one that they passed, which was keep the two at single family and the one to open space. I watched three, three people, or six people debate. I saw a vote. It was three to three. That meant that that motion failed. And so I'm taking that into consideration as well. That was, that's what I saw happen. I do not know why they did not account for that one alternative, alternates vote. So that's part of my calculus. I wanted to echo what Councilmember Marts said earlier. If there are viable conditions that we could add, I really don't know what those are. And when I say viable, it's going to kind of spill over into my fourth point. Because it's often that, well, it's not often. Every once in a while, we're forced with making a decision where we actually have a set of circumstances where, that present us with really two opposing objectives. We have the IMC, which has been referred, in Issaquah Municipal Code, talks about rezone, that's IMC 1804. And we've, we've learned about the criteria. We've heard a little bit about this. But as we were reminded tonight as well, is that we also have an obligation to work with the school district for their, for their benefit as well. I may be faced with, I think I'm going to be faced with to some degree, that there may be, I could have these two obligations that I have somewhat in opposition of one another. I don't know that yet. But, but there, for my own sake, in, in making that consideration, I'm going to be tapping into the spirit of cooperation that was offered in both directions. So hence, you know, I, I am very interested in if there are imaginable conditions that we could put on this that could help mitigate. And I'm going forward believing, yeah, there's, there's IMC 1804, but there's also our obligations to work with the school district, and I want to find a way to make this work.
Council Deputy President Batiste.
So just to echo some of what has been talked about, first of all, I just wanted to thank everyone who came out and spoke with us this evening. Getting this much feedback about an issue is, is just amazing and critically important as we go forward. So thank you for making the time for everyone who's here, who's, who is watching and in our overflow rooms as well. I thought there were a lot of great comments tonight about some things that we can agree on, and there were also, there was also a lot of talk about problem solving. And I think that that's really where, where we need to land, where I'd like to see some work done. I talked earlier about getting the criteria. I think that that's critically important so we can really evaluate. And to echo what some of my fellow council members have talked about, the design was talked about as a proposal. And as we're going forward into this, you know, difficult decision-making and also trying to be very careful in terms of any of our CIPA issues, but if, if there are alternatives, if there are conditions or anything that we can evaluate, I think that that's really important to bring, to bring forward. So again, just thank you to everyone who's come out and spoken with us this evening. We appreciate it.
Thank you. I'll go to Councilmember Walsh, followed by Council President Marts.
So in this spirit of problem solving and the idea that we need to abide by our comprehensive plan and, and making amendments to it, we have land use codes, we have IMC. I'd like to understand what our options are for making any modifications, any, any mitigations, anything that says, you know, we would like to see a certain buffer, or we would like to make sure X, Y, or Z isn't as much of an impact. I absolutely rely on the school district in having an overall site plan, but I'm trying to understand, and one of the things that PPC had done was in trying to be responsive to the community was looking at the third parcel and making a recommendation there. So I'd like to get a little bit more details into what are our options to look at all three of these parcels and put requirements on that as a way to adhere to our code and be responsive to the community. So just looking for that on our future meetings.
Thank you, Council President Marts.
Thank you. I, I also want to mention, I, the, the things that affect us all the most are things that involve our kids and things that involve our neighborhoods. So I want to thank everyone this evening. People showed extraordinary respect and extraordinary restraint in addressing these issues that they feel so passionately about. So thank you to everyone this evening. And I want to mention one piece of housekeeping, because some of you may be back to see further conversations. I want to mention just something that we have that's going on as a council that's a little bit weird over the next month. So just to make very clear, we have a council member who's going to be moving to a different That's Councilmember Hunt. The way things work, because she was filling an unexpired term, is her successor in her seat, which is one of two people, because the election hasn't been certified yet, that one of those two people is going to take over her seat on, I believe, the 26th. So that means the council meetings of November 26th, December 2nd, December 10th, and December 16th, Councilmember Hunt will not be here. That other person will be here. And then, in the first council meeting in January, the full 2020 council will take, will be seated. Councilmember Hunt will be back, and Councilmembers Winterstein and Council Deputy President Batiste will be coming down from council. So I just want to, for those of you who may be back to see us, hopefully you won't be too confused if things look a little different, starting the 26th, and look different again in the beginning of January. And if you have any further questions, city staff can answer it for you further. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman.
And if that's not interesting enough, maybe we should all show up at one of the meetings in clown suits. So I had just had two other comments. You know, we, the hot topic, of course, is the, the school district properties, but there are other proposals in this package. And so to the extent that those are also required to be analyzed under the criteria, then that should be done as well. And then the other question I want to ask, I want to ask for information and a recommendation about whether the administration would recommend or not that this gets remanded to PPC, considering the fact that they didn't have the criteria analyzed before them. So I just want to know what the, what the administration's recommendation would be. And if there is a reason for the recommendation that has any time sensitivity to it, then I would like to know that as well, so that we can consider that part of our decision-making. I'm, I'm, I have heard the comments about delays, and in terms of process, there aren't any, I understand the, I think I understand the comments about we don't need any more delays, we need the schools now. So it's not an exercise to delay the decision-making. If there is an option to remand it to PPC and the administration recommends that we do or not do that, and part of that is time sensitive sensitivity, especially with regard to the school district, that I just think that should be part of our calculus. Thanks.
Councilmember Walsh?
So when we're talking about this, can you remind me and the community about that timeline in the sense of comprehensive plan amendments are only adopted once a year? And so what is kind of our drop dead date that we would have to make a decision on something in order for it to be included in this year's amendment versus pushing off to next December?
Right. I believe if you, if you should go into January, I know the last time we did a big parks update, park settlement update, we went into January, and we were still able to make the next year's amendments in December, because the state could tell that it wasn't that we were doing two willy-nilly in one year. It just took us a while to get through the first years, and then in December, we amended that years. And so if you're, if you're that close, I don't think that it would be a problem. If you went until July, that might be an issue with then doing another set of amendments that year, because you've already gone farther into the year. But I would say if you can wrap up, you know, December would be ideal, but January, I don't think that the state would have an issue with that.
Okay. I need more legally defensible thoughts on that.
Sure. We can find out. I'm just saying, from my experience in all the years, we did that actually for one year when we had trouble with the park settlement. But I can check with the state to see if things have changed since then.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Winterstein?
Yeah, one final comment. I would be remiss as well not to express my gratitude for everybody who has participated in this. Yesterday was Veterans Day. I've had family and other close people to me that were, have, you know, put their lives on the line to make sure that they could protect the freedom and the liberty and the democracy that we all enjoy. I don't take that for granted for one second. And in a few weeks, I'll be stepping down off this dais. I'll be joining you in the crowd. And, and I want you to know that, you know, over these eight years, I've learned quite a bit, and much of it is that we are very fortunate that we can come together in a peaceful setting like this, and we are given an opportunity. I'm very fortunate to work with colleagues, too, that are very thoughtful and consider all angles very deeply. That has, that has shaped me, and I, hopefully this process is shaping you as well. There will be some who kind of win and some that kind of lose. I don't know what the outcome is always going to be, but I'm very grateful and I'm honored to be able to sit up here and serve you in this way. And your, your actions and words tonight really, really strike a, strike a chord for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further comments or questions? Does the administration have the direction in terms of what information we need to, to go forward? Yes. Okay, great. Then I'll give some information on next steps. So December 2nd, regular, there will be a regular council meeting. There will be the CIPA appeal hearing, and council will conduct the appeal hearing and may render a decision at that meeting. And then December 16th, there will be a regular council meeting, tentative council action on the comprehensive plan amendments, which we've been discussing as one of the elements this evening. And with that, there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned at 9:36 PM.